San Miguel County, that was me too. It is nine thirty on Wednesday, August twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. I am calling to order a special meeting of the San Miguel County Board of Commissioners. Present in the room are all three commissioners and a handful of staff. Let me see what else we have. Some folks online. We will begin with a moment of grab of silence for grounding and gratitude. Review of the agenda. I see we have item six consent agenda, but nothing on consent agenda. That's correct, right?
That is correct.
That's my first, so I've been commissioner, I think. Any other comments or questions about the agenda? Adjustments? Very good, okay. There we go. I will then move on to item five public comment for items not on the agenda. Please limit comments to three minutes. If comments are not related to an item on the agenda, there will be no board response or action taken since the topic was not posted with proper notice. And any comment could potentially violate the Colorado Open Meetings law. Do we have Megan or Carmen? What have you prepared to work the timer?
Yeah, we need to do it just because I'm not as sure.
Okay, it looks like we have a hand up for public comment. Let me know when you're ready, Carmen.
Ready. Very fast. Yeah.
This is for the last two. Since you sent it to us.
Fair enough.
What's enough? Are we ready? Yeah. Yes, please. Mr. Thule. You should be able to unmute and have three minutes for public comment items not on the agenda.
There we go. Thank you, Commissioner Brown. So, you know, we've had a long relationship. And in my opinion, I have demonstrated a consistent track record of constructive criticism with some very focused criticisms on people that I think take away from the democratic process for financial gain, for motives of financial gain. My specific question at this time. It's one I've made before. It goes to Agenda Item eight C. If you will allow me to ask that question when those people are present. And that is the status of my current adult protection request, including the determination of my at-risk, vulnerable status as an elderly disabled individual. Thank you.
All right. Any other items or folks who'd like to make a public comment at this time? Oh, okay. Let us move on now to item seven A, consideration of the proposed ballot measures for the November election. Mike Verdonia is unwell, and so I assume that Jared Bates is going to take this on.
Yes, Jared has it. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
Good morning, yeah. Jared's got this one. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, and so since last week, we, between Mike, Maura and I, we continued to workshop some of ballot language to hit a few of those additional kind of notes as we discussed. Really no changes to the early childhood education. We did some very minor changes to that, and I'm happy to read that aloud. And then we did kind of reshuffle that road and bridge question to make it two separate questions. One would simply remove the five point two five percent limit from the road and bridge levy and reallocate permanently the one point four that we have been putting in general fund dollars. And one very clear point we want to make is this is not increasing tax rates by any means. We're just permanently moving the rate from the general fund to the road and bridge fund for one point four mils. And so we've kind of got that language where we want it to be, I believe, for the five point two five. I would kind of hold off on doing any approvals until next week because I want Maura to take one more look. And I do know that we have that time to, you know, do that review next week as well. But I do want to allow her one more review before, to make sure I'm not punting it into the stand. So the third question is specifically just the mill levy increase question to increase the level of service for road and bridge by two tenths of one mil. Notably, that would raise revenue by three hundred and two thousand dollars per year or for the initial year, and then whatever that amount would increase thereafter. And so that includes some of that language as we discussed last week, where we lead with the Tabor required language. And then we follow that with the five and a half required language and then go through all of the other kind of explanation of how that levy would work. So I'm happy to read those to the board if if you like, or however you would prefer.
I definitely have some comments, particularly on the second one, but I don't know if you want to workshop those here or not. And I'm sorry to get you ahead of time.
That's, that's completely fine.
I have a couple of updates and comments as well, not specifically on language. But I heard back from Kathleen Merritt, representing E cap. She was able to bring this to the board this Monday. And she just wanted to relay to us that E cap voted to move forward with going to the ballot in November and supported combining the ballot question with the behavioral health mill levy. The Behavioral Health M H A P, they are meeting, that panel meets on Thursday. So they'll get the final approval from M hap at that point, but all is approved from the E cap side of that issue and question. Since I have the floor, I'll bring up my second comments based on some feedback I received from constituents since our last time we I'll discuss this and have heard back from specifically members of the Norwood School Bond Committee. They have real concerns with the third question going on the ballot this time around because there's concerns that that will be competing with the school bond and asked me to present that as an ask to potentially remove that from this ballot. It's, I think you all understand, the Norwood School Bond this time around, that the best grant has been pre-awarded and it is kind of a hail Mary situation here with passing the bond this time around. There's a lot of feedback from voters that when the fire and EMS mill levy increase, Norwood Fire and EMS Mill Levy Increase was on the ballot in addition to the Norwood School Bond last year, voters chose one or the other, and that kind of competition between the increase in taxes. There's concerns from the School Bond Committee that folks might not be as inclined to vote for the school bond, though it's a less of a finance, the road and bridge increase is certainly less of a financial commitment, but it is still impact to taxpayers. So I wanted to bring that up for conversation and let you know that I am I'm in support of axing that with with these considerations in mind.
Question. If we didn't pose this third question in November this year, when would our next opportunity be to do that?
November of next year.
Very much just one year away.
Yes. We are only allowed to ask at, wait, I, I think we could do a coordinated election, but but it's really only November elections for counties. So.
I do understand the concern. You know, with taxes, people generally are feeling quite tax burdened because of the because of the increase in assessed values and the fact that up until this year, a lot of our taxing districts were taking the full amount allowed because of the increase in valuations. And I do understand, you know, the more items on the ballot, the, you know, what do they call it? Voter weariness or something like voter fatigue?
Voter fatigue.
Yeah. I do think this is a really small amount relative to, you know, other asks that might be out there and it could have an impact on our road, you know, will have an impact on our roads. The idea of putting it off a year, I could, I can definitely, you know, see, you know, stomach that. I'm just thinking strategically, is it less likely to pass next year if people say, oh, we just did something for road and bridge the year before? Why are we being asked to do something again? So I feel like if we put it off, it might be put off for a long time. You know what I mean? But I, that's, those are just my pros and cons.
Yeah.
Megan, knowing that we are going to take a final look at this next week, it's all this decision, it's something that I hadn't thought about, and we welcome some time to hold there. I can see both sides of the problem.
Okay. I hear that.
Reasonable.
Yeah, that's definitely reasonable and
It's easy to pull it.
Right.
Jared, maybe it's possible to write a road and bridge mill levy increase question that is only for the R one?
No. Our, our county taxing jurisdiction is countywide and that there is a uniform levy law that kind of specifies unless we actually made a sub-district, which would be a much more involved exercise. You know, if we can explore that, that's not something I would be prepared to explore in any way in a week. But, but as we move ahead, I mean, we, we could start thinking about where our most significant needs for roads are and making some sort of sub-district to do that kind of work. There's a lot of moving parts to that.
Well, knowing that it's not possible to even initiate reach, let's put it on forward. But that will put us next week in the position of having to come up with a firm answer.
Yes, I'd love to hear from staff what your immediate reactions are to this suggestion. Do you mind sharing your views?
I, I I look at that as, you know, there's, there's going to be ballot competition in any election. And that is going to be one of the standing challenges to any ballot question that gets asked. I do think that because, as you pointed out, Commissioner Brown, we, we are in the first year of the revaluation cycle and those numbers are a little bit more concerning to those taxpayers. Because we saw that, what we've seen is an eighteen percent countywide increase in valuation. That's on the heels of the thirty-four percent increase in valuation at the last revaluation cycle. So a lot of, a lot of folks do tend to look at this first year of the two-year valuation cycle and have a little bit more hesitancy. So I, I would say we might have a better opportunity on the tail year. Because, you know, in that intervening year, people's tax values don't change significantly. So, so those are things to weigh. I, in terms of a staff approach, I, I think it just puts off-road improvement another year. I know we're gonna be making efforts to do road improvements, to do some of these these efforts to contract out certain roads, regardless with whatever resources we can, we can pull together out of the road and bridge fund balance or otherwise. But that three hundred thousand dollars approximate would just help us move ahead at maybe a faster pace.
I noticed Road and Bridge has their hand up.
Yes, Mr. Road and Bridge.
That was Ryan with Road and Bridge. You guys hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, all right. So, yeah, so historically, like Jared said, you know, this, it's, you know, road and bridge ballot measures haven't, haven't fared well. I mean, the only, the only, the, the only you know, point five mils is all that's ever been committed, you know, and historically they've always just, the commissioners have always put one point four in. So this would just be committing that, that one point four that has always been discretionary. And then to Commissioner Waring's question about just forming or just, just looking at taxing on the east end or a levy on the east end. So we did, we did look at that in two thousand and eighteen and nineteen and and we just have to make sure that it's very specific because if we form a special district or assessment district on this end, whatever the taxes are collected for half, the, the monies have to be tracked and spent specifically on what, what it's for. It can't be, it won't be just general like, like what we receive in H U T F or or the other, the other, you know, property tax, the other, the other revenues that we have won't be, it won't be as general the use. So I guess that would be the one, the one challenge with that, that we had discussed back then. But yeah, otherwise, yeah, I agree with you. That was one of the reasons why last year with all the ballot measures that were on there, I know you talking to Mike, you know, we chose not to do it in the do something in the twenty-six, you know, we kind of shelved it. So but yeah, it's just a, it's a question that, you know, whether, whether we get the additional revenue or not. You know, we're going to continue to work on a plan. I know that over the past years with our staffing, it's been challenging and we're, we've fallen behind on our schedule and on, on you know, road maintenance. And so we're, you know, working on on some new ideas and kind of changing that plan and, you know, ways to kind of help get, help the crew on the east end get caught up. So that's where, that's where this would be. But if it doesn't pass or if you guys choose to move it along, we won't change that planning. We'll continue to, to get creative and do what we can do.
Thank you, Ryan. Mike?
Thanks, Commissioners. I feel somewhat strongly that we should run at least the, the one point nine mil and the, the reallocation from what has been discretionary.
Can I just, can I just interject? I don't think that that is a question here.
Correct.
And Ryan, I wanted to also clarify that for you. We're really just talking about that third potential which would be zero point two mils for road.
And, and I am, I think most of our voters don't realize that the five point two five limit is going into effect. and that it will cap a majority of their special district and county taxes otherwise, but they'll, they see that increase in their value and they're assuming that that is correlative to their tax burden. So I agree with Commissioner Gleason that I would be um worried about a voter appetite to approve any new tax and I do feel strongly that Norwood um may not have other chances in the future. So if um, I, I'm sympathetic to foregoing the secondary increase question um in deference to the Norwood School District.
Thank you for sharing that. Um, I have a question which may not be easy to answer. Um, Jared, do you have a sense of how much additional revenue for Roden Bridge we might get from that second ballot question? And then, you know, that would help me understand how important the third ballot question is, and maybe that's a question you answer next week.
Uh, I luckily have that available to me relatively quickly, um, because I have done this math. The, the difference in that value is approximately two hundred thousand dollars.
Say that again? So, so what is the two hundred thousand dollars?
Um, the, so if
Second ballot measure.
If the second ballot measure passed and we were able to levy the full one point nine mils without the five point two five percent limit. We would collect approximately uh two hundred, two hundred and ten thousand dollars more in property tax revenue.
Okay.
Than if we have to follow the five point two five percent limit. And so that, that is the number that, you know, it's, it's not the three hundred thousand dollars we're talking about for new revenue, but it is a significant amount of money different, um, because as of, as of now, that five point two five percent limit is going to allow us about a hundred and seventeen thousand new dollars in the Roden Bridge Fund. Um, and you can imagine keeping up with the costs of road oil, the costs of many things that are increasing much faster than core inflation values. Um, you know, that is uh is a challenge for sure. Um, so having that additional revenue, those additional two hundred, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars approximately to use to try and, you know, keep ahead or, or at least keep our maintenance programs uh moving uh would be, would be important to us, um, because otherwise we're just gonna, as Ryan said, you know, Ryan has made a commitment to think outside the box and figure out how we can, you know, be creative about solving our problems and we'll just have to be creative about our, you know, financial problems at the same time, so.
Okay, so just, just to summarize, the second ballot measure would generate potentially two hundred and ten thousand dollars in additional revenue
Correct.
above the five point two five percent increase.
Correct.
And then we know the third one would generate about three hundred.
Right.
So we would be foregoing three fifths of our potential um increase in the Roden Bridge budget. Okay. All right, so we'll just chew on this until next week. And um, Galena, if there's anything other information that comes up that you can share between now and next week that might help us decide, you know, just pull that together and we'll be prepared to listen. That makes sense?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. Um, I mean, as, as you can, would imagine with any, you know, large um proposed tax increase, there's already been a lot of conversation among the community on the school bond measure and it doesn't look like it's gonna be just a lie through the finish line success. It's gonna be close, I think, once again, so I do, I'll just reiterate that I think those concerns from the committee are, are valid.
I, I really do understand and the importance of this one and how we might give it your way, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if I may, Commissioners, if, if I know that this ballot language is um kind of torturous to read because this, these, there are prescriptions as to how we write these things. Um, but if you have suggestions, I know, you know, Mike has had some really great suggestions of rewriting certain sections to be more thoughtful. And so if you've got ideas, like, please bring them to our table maybe in the next couple of days. That way we can have them cooked and, and these will be on the agenda, you know, in writing next week, so.
Jared, the part that um really helped me was the title. And I'm wondering if there's any more room in that title space where we could try inform the voters that the five point two five removal is a state mandate and that we are kind of cleaning house or um trying to avoid a unfunded mandate from above. Is there, I don't have quite the right language, but the concept that we've all been talking about is that we are simply trying to, at least in the first one, keep what we've already agreed on and in the second, uh, keep the system that we've already agreed on and codify it. And I, I'm wondering if the titles can somehow indicate that.
I'll, I'll put a little additional thought into what our title restrictions are. Again, we, there is there is kind of a positive and a negative of a, a really long title um at the same time, but I think we can invest a little bit of time and effort into those titles in particular as well.
And maybe that we land right in, by the shortcuts we can clear.
And it's possible we could, I just had a little idea that popped in my mind, just even adding it to the first line of the ballot measure might be helpful and I, I can share my suggestion with you after the meeting.
Great. And, and I would say we cannot effectively change the first line of any of the ballot measures because that is the prescriptive language from
I figured since it's.
From either Tabor or the five point two five percent limit. So those are, those are some of the nuances that I'm happy to hear the, hear the ideas and I'll, I will quickly bat them down.
Thank you for indulging me.
Are we about to use underlines or italics or other font that would draw attention to any additional language that was proposed?
I, I can review the, the language and, and this is where my memory gets murky because I, there are state requirements and then there are local government requirements, so I don't want to speak off the top of my head on this, but, but my inclination is not really.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Good to know.
Thanks for the effort you've put into this already.
Um, yeah, I don't think we're gonna be taking public comment on this topic. This is more of a, a board um strategy and decision, so. We will move on to item seven B, continued update on the stakeholder roundtable application and next steps in the selection process. Um, I just want to clarify for the public, because I see we have a number of people online who have applied for the SSR um that we had considered potentially doing interviews um of candidates, depending on whether we felt we had sufficient information through the application process and that has not really been decided upon. So that's something we're gonna discuss today, but we will not be interviewing anybody today since that has not been previously set up. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay.
Okay, good morning, Commissioners. Trea Ariza, Housing Specialist. And joining us virtually is Kay Simonson, Planning Director. Oh, so today's meeting is a continuation of discussion from last Wednesday. We'll be presenting the scoring results for the strategic stakeholder roundtable applicants and facilitating a discussion with the board to gather your input on next steps for confirming those SSR appointments. So just a brief recap of the project and what has brought us to this point. This project was funded by the Colorado Proposition One, the local planning capacity grant, and RFP was issued to select qualified consultant to develop the steps for land use code update for purposes of a comprehensive review of regulations that may unnecessarily constrain housing developments in unincorporated areas. Identify specific barriers that make housing development unnecessarily difficult, expensive, or time-consuming. Engage property owners, developers, neighbors, and decision-makers to create code amendments that increase housing supply while maintaining appropriate community oversight. So Logan Simpson ha- was selected and they developed a community engagement plan that has guided the public involvement that was presented in last week's agenda packet. In that packet, it outlines the roles for the project team as well as outreach tools, public outreach strategies, and an overview for participation and guidelines for the strategic stakeholder roundtable involvement. The project timeline is fifteen months with the overall goal of enabling more housing choices and preserving community character. So moving on to the str- it's a mouthful. I get, I get strategic and stakeholder um switched, so.
Strike holder.
But I mean, yeah, strike holder, SSR. So through a community-driven process, we will assess current zoning regulations, development standards, and permitting processes. Identify where unnecessary complex costs or delays prevent housing production, remove ver- remove these barriers by amending land use code. So at last week's meeting on August twentieth, staff reviewed the SSR scoring criteria, instructions, and considerations for the selections. Um, based on geography, professional experience, and knowledge, and lived housing experience, these factors were considered in the selection process, including technical expertise in housing development, planning process, legal framework, professional position, organizational affiliation, representation of diverse cross-section of the community, time and connectedness and experience in the community, providing voice for key affected groups, as well as availability and capacity. And so the purpose of the SSR group is a collaborative working group to de- identify housing barriers and develop practical solutions. Um, these members serve as communities liaisons, sharing information and gathering feedback. In the community engagement plan, it's recommended that the board select ten to twelve members for this working group. And I will pause and ask if Kay wants to add anything before we move on.
I think I'm good at this point. Keep going.
All right, thanks. All right, so before we get into the SSR group, let's take a look at our project team. So, couple um updates and follow-up items. So the core project team currently includes eleven members, um, not including the appointed SSR members. So as you can see, the working group is already quite large. This does not include our um Logan Simpson member, team members of five. So that would bring the total count for the internal project team to sixteen. So if the B, B O C C appoints ten SSR candidates today, that whole wor- working group could be up to twenty-six people. So a large and diverse group, uh, and we recognize the coordination challenges that can present, but we will manage schedules as efficiently as possible. So, um, based on some feedback from last Wednesday's meeting, uh, this, so I highlighted a couple items here in blue. So the school district representation, John Peldofflo, I believe, was an automatic um appointment to the project team. I just wanted to confirm that. And then um, the board decided to go ahead and hold uh an appointment for the September eighth monthly SMRAHA meeting for a board volunteer. Um, we did have a couple suggestions with that, since Commissioner Waring is um also on that board. Would um, the board here be open to dual representation for SMH, SMRAHA and the B O C C?
Galena, do you have a? It's just a suggestion when we were kind of talking through the project team, it's not necessary.
Um, Lance, how do you feel about that?
Get to Jared's comments and then I'll riff on that from there.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and, and what I wanted to convey, Commissioners, is um, you know, we're, we're just looking at ways where um, we, we may already have some representation on this board that covers some of these bases, so to speak. Um, you know, I, I thought of SMRAHA in particular and it is, you know, Commissioner Waring, Mr. Bordonia, we've got Geneva Channet from the town, we've got um Zoe Denal from the town, and then we have Matt Lewis. And, you know, I, I sat and I thought about that and I'm like, we already have town representation on this panel. Um, so I didn't assume we would really open the door for another town representative potentially. And then uh, Mr. Lewis would be a great selection, but I know he also has a day job. Um, and so there was some of my thought that, you know, maybe we can minimize our numbers by recognizing our kind of inherent representation that we already have, if we just can switch those hats when we're thinking about things, so.
Um, can you remind me why we had an SMRAH spot to begin with? Because I, yeah. Just what's the, what's the o- other side of that coin, if you will?
I would, I would suggest the other side of that coin is they are involved on a daily basis in the management of affordable housing within our community. So they may have some insights and and that's where I would say even any of our board members would, would maybe not serve as well as Pam Schiffern herself. Um, and so those, those are some of the thoughts that um I had. And, and again, it's, it's really we are going to do whatever the board wants us to in terms of building this team. Um, but we're just trying to think through all of the permutations because we also know at twenty-six to twenty-eight individuals, people are going to miss the meetings every once in a while, right? We're gonna miss a couple of those because we're gonna have to set a date and we're gonna have to run with it if we can get, you know, twenty of those folks in the room, so.
Yeah, uh, Lance?
Follow your logic, Jared, and I thought all along that while a large total number is daunting, that the reality is that there's no way that all of us are gonna ever be in the same room all at the same time. So whether it's uh thirty or twenty-eight or we hold firm at twenty-five, I think that the benefits of more input and more voices outweigh the um concerns without a few extra chairs. And we'll have the Zoom option, I'm sure we'll have the ability for um members to focus on the parts of the meeting that they're most interested in and simply listen in the parts where they don't have expertise and experience. So I guess I'm less concerned about trying to winnow down the numbers than I am about making sure that we have all the players.
And, I mean, I was gonna suggest that perhaps this is brought to the bo- the SMRAHA board on the eighth and if there is a big appetite of someone on that board to s- sit and represent, great, but if they feel that you can also represent in that realm and people don't have capacity um to join this, this roundtable, then that, I'm, I think either way we'll be okay, yeah.
Understood. Knowing that Jared also attends SMRAH meetings and
Okay.
He's going to be at every meeting, um, I'm confident that you're right, Kalina, we will have that representation and if we run into a particular angle that requires Pam's expertise, we could get it quickly. So I will do exactly what you say and.
Before you make that decision, or you can still continue with that, but I have another thought, which is Jared had brought up the idea of Pam serving as a SMRAHA representative. And if we really are looking for somebody who um has that kind of boots-on-the-ground experience with enforcing and managing the due restrictions.
It's the obvious choice.
She is the obvious choice in my mind, and at the same time, we do have, as Jared pointed out, the representatives on the board will otherwise be represented on the SSR through you and through um James Van Hooser, who's while he's not on SMRAHA, will represent the town of Tyrride. And then really Matt Lewis is a member of the public and we have lots of members of the public who will be on the SSR. So I would, you know, this is something I, as Galena suggested, that uh you all, your board can weigh, but I'm, I'm kind of thinking maybe Pam would be the right person if she has capacity.
Have a provisional uh yes from Pam pending. Have a provisional uh, yes, from Pam pending a discussion at the meeting, so. We're in in line there and if uh. It turns out that Pam is reluctant for any reason, I'll let you know and we'll. Carry on with the representation, as you say. Um, that's not a decision, Dreah, but that's a where we're headed. And I think that one extra seat at the table, just hold that until after the eighth and we'll tighten this up for it.
Noted, yep, just wanted to have the discussion.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Couple more items to discuss. So uh, we have two uh county planning commissioners listed on our project team. Uh, and this will be going through the future land, since we're going to have future land use amendments reviewed by the planning commission at a later time. Um, wanted to also ask if. Would still like to keep those two individuals or consolidate that to one individual since it will go through a more comprehensive process once we get through. The draft review of amendments. Don't say yes this time, you can noodle on it.
I I we thought about this quite a bit already, and I still feel it's important to have the two of them. I think they have different perspectives. Um, you know, Lee's been around for a long time and that's an important point of view. Hallie is. Is newer and I think looks at things really critically, not that Lee doesn't, but Hallie has a really. Um, maybe because she's new, maybe because she's an engineer or whatever, but she's really a valuable voice. Um, so I'm in favor of keeping the two of them on still.
I agree, um, and they even also, we didn't have any applicants. From. Any of the mesas and Hallie lives on Wilson Mesa, so she'll also bring that representation, um, which is just an extra added bonus in my mind. Um, yeah, in addition to everything that you just said in.
Issue too, Dreah.
Right, so may I just comment that? When you're listing organizations here for Lee Taylor, if you could note that he's the chair. Of the CPC, because that is a of important distinction, I think.
Noted, and I will make that change for future documentation purposes.
And perhaps too, you could put in under the organization for the, and I was just thinking for the public's understanding of who all these folks are. We could have the um job title for our for the uh county staff.
And per, I mean. Yeah, I was just gonna say the town, the town staff as well, just so people understand their positions.
Yep, that'd be great. And say everybody, let's do that for everybody. Sue, John Peldoffo is the superintendent. Of the schools, John Miller is mountain, I forget, trying to look that up.
General manager.
No, but that's it's changed, but their ti- their job titles would be great.
Do that, thanks. Um, and the other uh. Suggestion we had, which is. Minor uh was, you know, Kay and I have been leading a lot of the efforts and primary contacts with Logan Simpson, and while Jared has been. Involved with the process and we keep him informed along the way, um, the suggestion was, do you, would you? To remove him from the project team or do you, would you like?
Hard no.
To keep him on there, from me.
You'll you'll get a second now here.
That's true.
Jared, you're on the team.
We're just looking at. I I I like the approach of either way we'll be okay, so.
No, not with you.
Appreciate that discussion, so moving on to. Our scoring results. Alright, so just a brief overview on what's being shown on the screen. Each commissioner independently scored the candidates using. Uh, standardized spreadsheet the staff prepared. And that was provided to you last Thursday. So the image on the screen shows the compiled aggregated scores. And it's been alphabetized. Uh, staff received about. Or received twenty eight.
I think it's by score.
It's by score.
Yeah.
Yeah, there we go. Uh, we received twenty eight applications and we're showing the top twenty candidates and this. Based on geographic representation, range of expertise and diverse perspectives. So as outlined in the community engagement plan. Staff is recommending your top ten to twelve, uh preferably ten candidates for SSR appointments for today. Um, and then we can go ahead and. Open it up for. Your discussion. And is there anything you would like to add that they have in this case?
Yeah, so um. What we're looking at is uh, you know, so you've got the scores here for the top twenty. And then from these picking out those that you think will provide a good mix. Um, because you'll know that uh we've got, you know, people who scored well, but they maybe are duplicating um other people, so. Yeah, looking at a a mix, looking at geographic diversity, lived and worked experiences now is the more, you know, this was the. Um, objective exercise was to get to this point, and we're now entering into the subjective. Um, where you're, you know, going a little bit more with your gut. Um, and weighing some other factors, so that's where we're at.
Thank you. Jared, did you want to make any further comments, further staff comments?
Um, I, the only thing that I would like to point out is after after your scoring. We we kind of, there was a question of. Um, if I think one of the scoring criteria, which was availability and capacity, if that was. Uh, objective enough, it it wasn't as defined as some of the other categories. And I did run the scoring without um that factor. Just just kind of to see, does it impact scores? And it did not significantly impact scores. And and so I just wanted to allay any concern there may be or may have been about, well. People might be getting points for a little bit of a soft um criteria. And and while those points, we did leave them in here, it doesn't change the actual ranking in any significant way. So uh, it might have moved somebody from second to third or made another tie at. Fifth or something like that, but it didn't move anybody significantly up or down the list.
That's important. Thank you for clarifying that. Um, would anyone like to begin with their comments? If not, I'm happy to.
You can open it and we'll keep going from there.
Taking the.
Take it away.
Feeling like they'd like me to be the. Person that goes first. Um, so uh, first of all, I want to say I am so pleased that we had so much interest in the, I'm just gonna call it the SSR, Dreah. Keep it simple, so we don't mix up the words. Um, really, really excited about that and also the caliber of the folks who applied is just outstanding. I'm also excited to see that we have some folks that I haven't, since I've been commissioner, seen much of at at um commissioner meetings. Um, suggesting that. You know, we we are, um, there's broader interest in this board even than I had expected. Um, so that was really exciting. And then also folks that we've heard quite a bit from over the last few years um on planning matters have applied and. That's terrific because I think this is a a really a sort of productive way for us to collect information from people who. Who are very well informed and have strong opinions, and so I was really pleased to see, um, you know, sort of that those. The breadth of 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 interest. Um, I'm sorry, we can't take everybody, but I think we've already established that the the uh, the committee is gonna be a lot um. Uh, bigger than we'd even anticipated. I don't know when Logan Simpson suggested ten to twelve that they anticipated we'd have eleven. Appointments in addition to um, you know, reviewing applications, so. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Waring, for agreeing to be the chair of this, which you may have done before you realized how many people would be on it. Um, I um. And have looked at this um just now and counted through like the top ten, if you wanted to go with ten. Um, and that brings us down to Nina, uh, and please, is it Co- Coty? What is it?
Kofi.
Kofi, okay, just the way it looks, Kofi, okay. Um, that brings us down to 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 ten. Um, I have one uh, and then now I'm starting to think about geographic representation. As well as the other categories that Dreah reviewed. And I see uh in that top ten, two people who I think represent. Somewhat similar points of view, and that would be kind of the Deep Creek Mesa concerns. I see. Um, Shelley Duplan and Nick Farco both on that line and and let me just. Say, you know, for the public to hear how helpful they have been in all the work we've been doing the last couple of years. I do think that um, that it's been made clear to me through the way they represent themselves here that they perhaps share similar points of view. And um, I do think that to have two folks from that um kind of region is is hea- too heavily weighted. So I would suggest that we pick one of those. And um, wonder if anybody has a thought on that.
Um, just in. The realm of numbers, Nina Kofi would be the eleventh selection there, it's just.
I think I.
For clarification.
Thank you. I went to ten thinking we would only pick one of those two, but thank you very much. That's important. Um, any thoughts on that or? Should I keep going? Because I can upwards have an opinion.
Uh, why don't you keep keep going if you're in agreement, Commissioner Waring?
With that saying, with the deep creed conversation?
Just, yeah, keep going and then we'll weigh in when you've gotten all your thoughts out.
Overweight my voice in this conversation.
Um, no, we'll we'll have opinions certainly.
Okay, yeah, so um, I would favor Nick over Shelley, um, primarily because. Uh, well, kind of two reasons. One is that. My understanding is Shelley is not a San Miguel County resident, and I think it would be. Kind of an odd precedent to put somebody who um isn't a resident on this board, and I know we did not state that as a criteria. But I can't remember really ever appointing someone from outside the county to sit on a kind of stakeholders or. Um, you know, even like a commission or anything like that. Um. I would, in saying that, I would say that I really hope Shelley is as engaged in this as, if you guys agree with me in this selection. Is as engaged in this as she has been in so many other planning matters because she adds such a. Reasonable voice. She's very respectful. She thinks of creative ideas, solutions when we're stuck. I mean, she is invaluable as a community member. Um, but that's just kind of how I've been, I I, what hit me with with Shelley and Nick.
Um, yeah, I mean. From my experience sitting on the planning commission, now on the Board of County Commissioners and every conversation. Or issue Shelley Duplan has participated in through her position, I, she always brings something valuable to the table and information that. Many had not really thought through or been privy to. Um, she is a wealth of information. Her. Expertise in infrastructure and understanding of land use code um is quite valuable, so. I, it's not surprising to me that she's, you know, rated where she she kind of. The ratings shook out where they did with her being very up top there. Um. I mean. I hear the those concerns about having two that have, two folks. Sitting on the round table from that region um with, that have brought very similar concerns forth through various. Um, issues and um, yeah, I mean, that that viewpoint. Whether Shelley or and or Nick are on this round table will certainly be well represented, so that is. That's good. I would, um, as far as. Actually being a constituent and living in the county, um, Nick Farco would be my pick if we. Decide to just choose one of them, um, because of the fact that he lives in the county. Um. So those are my thoughts now. I, that didn't really help to narrow it down, other than I would choose Nick if we decide to choose one of the two.
And what's your view on whether we should have one or two from that?
I mean, are we strictly talking about? Representation. Of, I mean, there.
Yeah.
There's another individual on this list who also lives in Aldosoro, so I think that's important to note.
Well, I think there are actually two others on the list who live on Deep Creek Mesa.
Right, right.
Nick Dirk and Morgan.
Uh, yeah, oh wait, where where does Le- uh, Lainey Dimes live? That's what I thought, um, so. Um, so there's.
Get that representation as well.
Yeah, yeah, so that that's, you know, I think important and notable.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Lance.
Commissioner Brown, I follow your logic, um, um, Shelley's residing outside of the county. And knowing that, we are being. Subjective here, but we're also trying to represent geographic interests and regions in the. Um, East End. I would propose that we follow your advice and. Scratch Shelley reluctantly from this list and. That would take us to. Um. Ten, and then I would propose that we. Add Nina and substitute Catherine Warren for Dirk. Noting that Catherine was point zero five of a percent below Dirk and that from a. Geographic representation standpoint, I think that Lawson is important. And I would like to propose we include her. That would bring us to an even dozen, I believe.
I like that thinking, actually, the way I'm looking at the rating, they're identical, Catherine and Dirk.
Thank you. I am corrected and you are right. I would like to put Catherine as the forerunner for geographic regions.
And she's also on the, did you already say this Lawson Hill homeowners association?
I did.
I was focused on the.
I didn't say Lawson Hill HOA, but yes, I said Lawson representation.
She's actually even on the board.
Correct.
Kalina, how do you feel about that?
Um, yeah, I support that. I I do think it's really important to have Lawson Hill um represented.
So if we were to follow my suggestions, we would be eliminating Shelley. Um, and including Catherine.
Yes.
And just for math reasons, that would be a a total of eleven people being.
Gone between ten and twelve.
Yep.
Um, one other point for consideration, um. Is representation from Rights Mesa. Um, currently, the way we, where we are right now, we would have only Nina Kofi. And I wonder if that feels appropriate. Were to all of us, or if we should consider a second.
Information we're given has some.
I I do have a thought. I I think it would be appropriate to appoint another representative from Rights Mesa. Um, just to bring a more broad perspective to this round table, um. And even the number of applicants we had was proportionately, uh, that 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 would, that would uh whittle down to two representatives. Uh, out of if twelve were chosen, if we want to like go down that rabbit hole of. Logic.
That's that's a good point. Just to point out, there are two other people, well, three other people on this list from Rights Mesa, right?
Correct.
Durani, Kyle Crist and Tony, sorry, I'm gonna not say this right, Mar- Morrisick. Right, I I hear you, Kalina, yeah. There's been strong interest from Rights Mesa.
Yeah, there was, and I I think that speaks to um. The desire to, from folks residing on Rights Mesa to really. Take part in this conversation and help shape the outcome um. With intent of representing that portion of the county, um. And reading through the applications. There was certainly. Expressed interest in keeping the perspective of uh. Developing housing or shaping zoning to really complement the needs, um. And even just workforce that reside within that region of the county.
Yeah.
You have those suggested names from that submission?
Um, I mean, just going down the list base based on rankings, I mean, Tony Durani is would be next up and. Certainly his representation coming from the Norwood Water Commission, I think would be very valuable just to understand those concerns tied to. Future development on Rights Mesa and how that is so intrinsically tied to the needs for water delivery and storage.
I also like Tony because of his, I mean, decades of of experience here and he's lived both on the East End and. On Rights Mesa, so I think he'll have some perspective there. So I think he'll have some perspective there. He's also housed workers on his farm, you know, when he had interns over the summer. So he understands the employee housing situation.
We could go to a dozen pretty easily. And I'd be willing to do that and just accept that, one, we have a large group. And two, not every person will be available. And I, I will take on that challenge.
Lance.
All right.
Any comments from staff um regarding our conversation? I do not see hands again. This is not really a matter for public discussion. So we are going to um not take public comment at this time.
Um, so, yeah, I was just gonna say it might be helpful to, you know, kind of create your presumptive um uh group and then uh, you know, representatives and then kind of uh, you know, slot people in and out from there. That might be a way to start narrowing it down.
Meaning if people decline or?
Well, no, uh, you know, look at, so kind of put together what your, your presumptive group is. You know, who you all, you know, think it should be. And then look at that and say, is this the mix you want? And if so, that's it. Um, that'll be it. Or, or you, you know, continue to slot people in and out until you get to where you want to be.
I think we just went through that, Kay.
Yeah, I'm just saying it might help to kind of put something together graphically right now.
Would you like us to read the names with that?
Uh, I'm not sure what you're asking. Jared has a que- a comment. You can clarify.
I, I think I wanted just to, I was gonna read what I understand that list to be and just confirm with the commissioners that this is what the intent is. And then we can see if we're hitting the right notes.
That sounds good.
So, so we would be, we would have Amy Levick, Jason Sewell's, and I might butcher these names. I apologize. Um, Elaine Demus, Stephanie Solomon, Peter Johnson, Anna Wilson, Danny Kraft, Nick Farco, Paul Major, Nina Kothi, Catherine Warren, and Tony D'Arion.
That was my understanding.
And, and that, that makes twelve. And um I think to Kay's point, does everybody feel that hits all of our geographic representation points? Our expertise points, those kind of things, if there's any questions there?
I really do.
I do. Um, just for the public listening, there, within that list, there are representatives from ski ranches, Two Rivers, Town of Telluride, Mountain Village, um Rights Mesa, down Lawson Hill. Yep. Um, it's a, it's a pretty diverse geographic group, group of folks. And then within the realm of developers, uh, real estate, um banking, um finance, uh la- land use um and zoning law. Um, and community organization, that it's a pretty diverse group as well.
As well as I would say um residents with lived experience.
Yes, absolutely.
Housing and employee housing needs and so forth.
Yeah, and a broad spectrum of age, which I also feel was important. And it did play into my decision making just to have good representation and diversity there.
And gender, I would say. Yeah.
I could close this conversation by thanking everybody who applied and thanking Dreah for helping us look through the rankings and doing the number crunching.
I, I, I echo that. I would also like to note um to kind of reinforce what Dreah said is that there are going to be many opportunities for community input during this process. There will be, um, you know, I don't, I haven't seen the specifics yet, but I know there will be community meetings. There will be focus groups held. We are always accepting written um, written uh comments. We will have loads of public meetings um with the Planning Commission, the Board of County Commissioners, and also the SSR itself will be a public meeting. Not a meeting where the public will be invited to comment, but they will be welcome to attend, whether in person. Well, probably considering the size of the, of the committee, but that will be left up to you all. Um, so there, even if you have not been selected for the um SSR, we do want to hear from you and we will provide all sorts of venues for, for that to happen.
Thank you. Yes, we'll reconvene with Logan Simpson next week and give them an update. And we'll start planning our scheduling of our October series. And then Logan Simpson should have a, a calendar of um future outreach events. So important information will be posted on the San Miguel County website under the Housing Code Update Project page.
Great. And um, Dreah, would you, I, I, did I understand from one, a memo that I read that this SSR will convene for the first time the week of October sixth?
Uh, I believe that was the tentative we were looking at.
Okay, because people have been asking me, you know, when are we gonna kick off? But that's tentative, I understand.
Like the day or days for that week haven't been determined, but we should have a better idea.
After next week. Okay, that's great. And then may I request also that when Logan Simpson has kind of flushed out other elements of community engagement that we could, the Board of County Commissioners could um review that and maybe have a little input. I know we're getting a little into the weeds, but public input is, is really important during this process. Um, I know commissioners have made that clear. So I'd just like to have eyes on that, if that's okay.
Of course. Um, so I'm hearing you would like us to come back and provide an update prior to the October series outreach?
Uh, whenever it's appropriate that we could have an update on the other elements of public outreach. We've had some, you know, overview of it, but I'd be interested in the more specifics and the schedule as well.
Of course, we can do that.
I appreciate that unless, yeah, anything else from other commissioners? Great. Okay, I think we're ready to move on.
All right, thank you.
Um, it is ten twenty-five and we are gonna move in, or sorry, ten thirty-six. We're gonna move into another big chunk of the meeting here. Um, it could take, uh, doesn't have an estimated, oh, an hour. So would the commissioners like to take a break before we sit for another hour? Or are you ready to move? And I'll ask staff as well. We'll be quick because we have people ready to charge us. I'm okay, but I want to allow it for anybody else who might need a quick break.
Two-minute leg stretch, please.
All right, two-minute legs. Thanks. And then we will be back. Um, item number eight, um, three topics under the Department of Human Services. On low San Miguel County, it is ten forty-two and that was our roughly two-minute leg stretch. Um, something occurred to me during the break, Jared. We didn't talk about how we will notify applicants of the decisions today from the S- of the SSR.
I believe we have contact information for them and then we will inform everybody of their selection or, you know, send our appreciation uh otherwise.
That'd be great. If we could get that done by the end of the week, I think that would be
I think that should be easy enough.
Great. And I just also want to clarify for the public that um we had considered last week that we might need to extend this decision over two weeks. Um, but we have made the decision with the work is complete and so we will not be readdressing this topic next week. Um, okey doke. Moving on to item eight A, update on the Colorado Child Care Assistance Program for Families. We call that C cap, the waiting list. And we have our good friends here, Kathleen Merritt from Bright Futures, Linnea Edwards, our Human Services Director for San Miguel County, and Kathy Barber from Strong Start, and also Gina from Human Services. We have seats at the table for all of you. If you'd like to step up to the microphone, in case you want to participate and add in, I, I know we'll start with Linnea.
Alex is also online.
Oh, good.
Notification as well.
Hi, Alex. And Alex Van Sickle is our Deputy Human Services Director. Alex, do you want to turn on your camera? If you'd like to, we'll, there you are. Nice to see you. Okay, take it away, Linnea.
Um, yeah, so we had a request to kind of reconvene around our waitlist for C cap. Um, so currently
Before you do that, can you just remind us of why we have this waitlist? Thank you.
Absolutely.
And the
Yeah. Yeah, so we entered into a waitlist um uh, uh, early, early this year um to, to try to help maintain some costs. We knew as a state that we were going to be significantly overspent in childcare. And San Miguel County of, of the significantly overspent counties was the only small county on that list. And so we were facing some financial worries um moving forward, not just for this fiscal year, but also the next few fiscal years as federal rules started being put into place that we had a requirement to follow that would increase cost. So that would increase things such as continuous enrollment and increase um the provider costs over time. Here in San Miguel County, we've done a really good job of trying to increase those provider costs over time before this federal rule is active. Um, however, that continuous enrollment is something that we will not be able to avoid or really prep for. Um, Colorado has a waiver currently that will end August first twenty-six. And so starting August first twenty-six, unless it's ended early, that's when our continuous enrollment will start. Our projections have always looked at what continuous enrollment will look like and the, and the cost as we, as we kind of push numbers out, what that overall cost will look like. Um, because we don't know when kids are not going to be in daycare or will be at daycare throughout the year until we get to that continuous enrollment. So our projections do include what continuous enrollment would look like.
And continuous enrollment, as I understand it, is that people have to pay for every day they're scheduled, regardless of whether they're present. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, and then the provider pay was, yeah, okay, thank you.
Um, and so just kind of to recap, we, when we met and made a decision around our waitlist, we were looking at the last couple of years of data around how many kids had been enrolled through the C cap program and kind of made an educated decision around thirty-three. That had been the top amount of kids that we had seen enrolled in C cap um over the previous couple of years. And that continues to be where our waitlist holds currently. As of yesterday, when we pulled numbers, we have thirty-four kids that are enrolled in C cap. And so the reason that we have more than our waitlist is that kids can, there are two reasons that a family or a child could jump that waitlist. One being that they're transferred out of another county into San Miguel County and already approved for C cap. So we cannot deny that, that into the list. The other reason would be if we had a family that had childcare assistance and then had another child that was eligible to go into childcare, we cannot deny that. So, so we, we may have siblings that join and we may have these case, these county transfers. Those are not something that we can deny on a waitlist. And so they would jump the waitlist and start and would push our numbers above what we saw as our waitlist.
And when you say our waitlist, my understanding is that the thirty-three is the number of people enrolled. That's kind of our max. And then after that, people go on the waitlist.
Correct.
Okay.
And so currently we have, as of yesterday, the thirty-four kids that are attending and approved. And we have four children that are currently on the waitlist approved. Um, and so that's kind of where we're sitting right now in our count. Um, another kind of just factoid is that twenty-four counties in the state are on, well, really, twenty-one counties are on a freeze and three counties are on a waitlist. So the freeze versus the waitlist, just to re-educate, is that the waitlist allows us to move kids on and off and we continue to approve people for C cap services, even if they're not able to go into childcare at the time. A freeze puts a number and nobody can jump that. Nobody can, nobody can move into that. It has frozen and then there are no ongoing approvals for C cap allowing that to move. So counties, some of the larger counties have been on a C cap freeze for almost two years. Um, and so we're, we're looking at, you know, what that looks like for the state as a whole fiscally and then us locally at San Miguel County. Um, we, we were, we were very lucky this year that through the long bill, um, they, they were able to kind of reallocate some money to the C cap program to, to kind of work at making sure that the C cap was whole for the state. was whole for the state this year. Um, and so they were able to pull about ten million out of that. Um, we were about fourteen million overspent, so they pulled ten million through the long bill, reallocated it, and then through surplus distribution um at the end of this fiscal year, we were able to cover the rest of it from the counties that understood their C cap. So, so C cap itself for the twenty, end of the twenty-five fiscal year was made whole. That is not going to happen next year. Um, and as, as we all know, like the legislature is in session, a special session now, talking about a lot of different fiscal issues um that the state is facing. There are a handful of human services items on that agenda that we'll be talking about for like economic security for families that can include Medicaid and SNAP. So those are things that we are taking into consideration in the next, you know, twelve to eighteen months of what that looks like for us, not just as a state, but locally. Um, and so those are, those are kind of where we're sitting right now with just facts and um I, I think it's really important to kind of talk about the money, right? Like talk about what our projection shows. And so based in our current allocation that we received, that we're working into our budget, the county received two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
This is for twenty twenty-five?
For twenty-five, twenty-six.
Oh, right, because they're on a different.
Different fiscal.
Okay, so that was two hundred and fifty thousand?
Two hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-five specifically.
And how does that compare to what we have previously received?
So we received eleven thousand dollars more this year, which is one kid. So, so i- if you average it out, one child added to the C cap program is about eleven thousand dollars a year. So, so that's one child that was added to our to that allocation. In that allocation, we have to do direct services, which are those payments for C cap eligibility and to the providers, and we have to do administrative costs out of that allocation. Um, so when running our numbers for this year, our projection, and again, remember, we're running them for continuous eligibility, continuous enrollment, so we're paying all those days just to see what those projections looks, because that's going to happen. Um, we're looking at our direct care payment of being three hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty.
But the continuous enrollment, you said, doesn't start till August first twenty twenty-six, so that's after this fiscal year.
Correct. And so we wanted to kind of.
You did or did not include continuous enrollment?
We did include continuous enrollment because we wanted, we, we, we don't know when kids are not going to be in care. So we're not sure if one kid is there every single day of the year or if one kid's only there three days, but they're supposed to be there five. So it's really hard to kind of give you that, that absolute number. Um, and so we wanted to kind of present what's the worst case scenario and we know this is coming, like this is not changing. We will have continuous enrollment. I think it's worth having that conversation now, knowing that that's coming and understanding what that could look like. And every kid on our list could attend every single day. Maybe. And so I think we have to know what that looks like. And so in doing the math, just for the direct payments, we're a hundred thousand dollars overspent. That does not include any administrative cost. And so also looking back in our previous budgets and our previous M O reports, for at least the last three years, we have overspent our administrative costs. We, and, and not been able to, um, so technically we don't have the allocation to pay for Gina, um, who does all of our childcare.
Can you just back up and discuss how administrative costs are typically paid?
Yeah, so they are separated out of that allocation or they're paying our salary costs. Um, and so administrative is the, it's the running of the program. So similar to our chat, our um our human services admin costs and our hic puff admin costs or healthcare policy and finance admin costs, we see this trend across the state that admin is overspent because of the amount of people it takes or the amount of time that it takes to do the work of putting it into the program, taking the applications, meeting with the clients when necessary and ensuring that they're either approved or unapproved for um C cap. And so we, we know we need a person to do that. Um, and, and that is, that currently is Gina. She's our, she's our C cap, like person that does all of our C cap stuff and her, her, that's her admin costs.
And um, so the hundred thousand that we could potentially be overspent in twenty twenty-five, twenty-six does excludes the administrative costs.
Correct.
And what's your estimate of that?
So my estimate administrative costs, we kind of took what we spent this year and assumed that it was going to be about the same. So sixty-eight thousand dollars includes all that administrative costs. So all the Gina salary plus all the other.
Sure.
Things that an admin cost includes. Yes. So that's with our current waitlist.
Question.
Yes.
Um, the, we've assumed the worst case scenario.
Correct.
But we know we don't have to pay for continuous care in this upcoming fiscal year. Do you have an estimate based on previous attendance of what a more maybe realistic scenario is?
So I can tell you that this year in our closeout, our allocation was two hundred and forty thousand dollars. All of our direct payment costs were just at two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And so we overspent any portion of our admin. Um, and so we've seen that being the trend that we're spending all of our C cap allocation towards direct payments. And that, that would be an actual number with what those absences would look like. Um, is that we are spending almost exactly what our C cap allocation is. And then we're over any admin costs. Now, if we, if we didn't take it as one lump sum of of C cap allocation and kind of push that all towards um direct costs, we would be separating that out. And so we would say that we've had about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in allocation for direct payments and sixty-eight thousand dollars in admin costs, if we, if we were separating that out, but we have found that we're pushing it all towards that direct cost because we, we find that we need to make sure that those providers and those kids are being able to.
Sure. And so how have you funded the administrative costs previously?
Yeah, so historically, we can push our TANF underspend towards, so temporary assistance for needy families. So anything we underspend in TANF can either be pushed to childcare or pushed to child welfare. Historically, we have pushed it towards childcare, knowing that we were going to be overspent. However, that also doesn't always cover what that overspinageure is. And then we also could and have previously kind of dipped into our TANF reserve. Um, I, I think another really good point to make in regard to our TANF reserve is we're not sure what's going to happen with that. So there was a hospital that was presented and, and approved around TANF reserve at the state level, which will trickle down to the counties kind of talking about reducing those reserves. We don't know if there's going to be a floor to that. We haven't heard. Those are supposed to roll out this, this next state year of what that looks like for our TANF reserves. Um, I think it, you know, it's important, like the big counties have lots and lots and lots of TANF reserve and that's what they're looking at trying to reduce. Um, and, and ultimately reduce the overall state TANF reserve. Um, I'm, again, I'm not sure what our floor is. Our TANF reserve sits at a hundred thousand dollars. Um, that is the max that we're allowed to have as TANF reserve. Um, TANF reserve can be used for a lot of different things. It's very flexible funding has been used in the past to try to cover some C cap or child welfare. We've been able to give some grants out of that in the past. Um, however, I'm not sure how much of that TANF reserve we're going to be able to have moving forward after they kind of implement this piece around TANF.
I was just going to suggest, I know Alex had her hand up, so she may have some additional um insights to share.
Alex, yes.
I just wanted to add uh one piece and to your question about kind of more real data. We got our um, our numbers for, and Linnea, correct me if I'm wrong, July. Uh, so our first, first month in this allocation looked like we'd spent around twenty-seven thousand. And so when we use that kind of real-time data and project that out for the rest of the year, those numbers align with the numbers that Linnea is presenting. Um, and it also shows that, and Linnea, correct me if I'm wrong, I know you have it written down, but uh, San Miguel County is already ten percent spent over their allocation, whereas some of those other counties are showing eight percent. So we're already ahead of the pack showing um, showing that overspent number.
After just one month.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions from the other commissioners at this point? I know you've both been on or is currently served on, on the what's the name of the board?
E cap.
E cap. Thank you. I was gonna say C cap. My God, that's months ago. So you probably have a lot more background in this than me, but anything else at this point?
No, thank you for all your questions of those. That was helpful for me. I was kind of formulating very similar questions and beat me to the chase there with a lot of those funding questions. Um.
Think that we knew this day was going to come and when we met with you previously, Linnea, we established a waitlist concept instead of a freeze because we wanted to maintain the possibility of um, either funding or not, we did not want to close the door. Um, as we've all been aware, the federal government has shifted a lot of funding streams, often turned them off, and we have talked about how we wanted to try to keep our county programs whole. I am thinking that really the question before us is do we want to take money out of the general fund in order to keep um C cap enrollment at the levels that are being requested? And if we do that for this new number of thirty-seven, thirty-eight, is that our new um line for the waitlist? Does that just move to that and we wait and see and Linnea comes back and reports? Or do we establish a different number for the waitlist and give Linnea a little, and Gina a little breathing room? That's my inclination for this year.
Hmm. I, I, so I think that, I mean, I have the numbers for thirty-eight and I'm happy to present those as well. Um, I think that the, the worry is, how many times do we shift the needle?
Mm-hmm.
Right? Like, I think that's my worry. Fiscally, how many times do we shift that needle? We recognize the need. We, we understand the need, um, and we want to be able to, hence the reason we very clearly thought through the difference between a waitlist and a freeze. We want there to be some movement if and when possible. We understand the constraints that our community has in finding childcare and being able to continue childcare and the cost of childcare. I think, you know, what are the other funding streams that we have that could offset some things? Um, we are not getting any, as far as the state is concerned, this, this is, this is our bottom line of money that we're receiving. We, we will not. I think there's some thought in the governor's budget this year that maybe we could petition for some, but I, I just don't, I just don't see it. I think it was a long shot in the spring to get money um to cover what we already had overspent. And these are conversations that I know the bigger, larger counties have been having for at least six months longer than we have. Um, I think we, to be honest, I think we're kind of late to the conversation. Um, I think I, I got data and I was like, oh, my goodness, we have to have this conversation. And, and now I think we're seeing it happen in real time. We have a year of data. We're seeing what that's looking like um and what that waitlist has looked like um on, on our end. Um.
I agree um that we cannot expect any additional money from the state. I mean, they just met in special session to cut one point two billion dollars. So, or find an offset in revenue. So there's no way. And I agree with you that the following year, twenty-six, twenty-seven may be even tougher. Unless we get some real tax reform, but that's a whole other meeting. Um.
I, I also think your, your point about the, the bigger picture of greater need within the community with cuts to Medicaid and SNAP is just gonna exacerbate this need moving forward for families and, you know, really taking that into consideration with, you know, entertaining the idea of making the um accepted list a little longer, accepting those extra kids that are on the waitlist. Um, but we need to really think about the implications of that, to your point of moving the needle. And, you know, what is that going to look like in another year if there's more kids on that waitlist? What, you know?
Statistically, this is an anomalous year in where we've been averaging thirty-three.
Correct.
And so hopefully we go back to average, but there's no guarantee of that. I think that we can only commit financially to a year. So we'll be continuing this conversation. Um, and there's no right answer here. There's only what we feel like we can afford and what we feel like is the right thing. And I'm willing to be persuaded to just hold the line at thirty-four and let those kids be on the waitlist and see what shakes out. But I think we all sensed this was coming and my, as I said before, my inclination is to um, include those kids, maybe set the new number at thirty-seven for the waitlist and hope we don't get any more, not because we don't want to help, but because we're feeling like uh we're a little tight right now, all of us.
I'm sure you've thought about this, but is it possible, oh, I see you have a kind of, Jared, go ahead. Before I ask.
Finish, finish your question. Yeah.
Is it, have you considered, is it, and is it possible to kind of spread the current funding across thirty-seven rather than thirty-three families so that maybe everybody gets a little less daycare, but we get to, yeah, you're taking.
I, I regards to the rules that are down the sea. I mean, it's very structural.
Yeah.
It's, it's financially based. You, you qualify based on your, on your financial need. And, and then there's, there are parental fees that are attached to C cap for every child, but it could be that one parent pays twenty dollars, it could be one parent pays two hundred dollars based on kind of that sliding scale kind of feature within C cap. And so it doesn't allow us to say, well, we've got thirty-seven families, so each family's going to get this much C cap and they're going to have a, a hundred dollar payment. It, it just isn't.
I understand. Yeah, I figured. Um, just one second, Jared wanted to add and then we'll go to Kathy. Yeah.
I was, I was just going to, I guess, kind of try to encapsulate this. The, the question we have about C cap is we're, we're projecting to be a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars in the hole. Right? Um, we, we do hope.
Maximum.
Maximum. Well, not maximum if we adjust our numbers, right? And so I think that in this current year, we, we are in the last throes of um the ability to not do continuous enrollment. So we're hoping we're going to save a small margin there. Um, but that hasn't proofed out, at least looking at the one month of data that we have in the new year, right? Um, we are hoping that this TANF scenario continues in a positive direction and we get to both keep a fund balance that's reasonable and we might have underspend that we can put towards this. But that is one of the things we know will shift, both due to the federal posture and due to frankly, differential need when we're seeing a little bit of an economic decline. And so I, I think that those are, when I'm, I'm thinking about this really intractable problem. Um, you know, that's where we're at uh is that negative one seventy effectively. And if we do add these additional seats, that's another forty-four thousand dollars on top of that number. And so, you know, I, I really do appreciate Linnea and Alex's work to kind of think of every couch cushion we can look under to keep this program viable. But I, I agree with Commissioner Waring that some of this are kind of that federal policy coming back to Colorado. Um, we know that the governor is going to roll out a list of cuts in the next two weeks. And that does concern me and in how we advise moving ahead. So it's, it really is a tough, tough problem to figure out, do we, do we expand that availability, knowing that we're going to be in the hole a little bit? I do want to, you know, kind of just keep in mind for the commissioners, we, we maintain a fund balance in the social services fund or the human services fund as it was renamed. I'm bad about that. Um, of eighty-five thousand dollars. Um, so we keep that low, so we remain qualified for a number of things. Um so we keep that low, so we remain qualified for a number of things, but we know a lot of those funding streams are drying up at the same time. We do have some other fund balances that we can manage and, you know, see how we go year over year. But we'll have to add those to kind of projections of spend as we keep moving ahead. So I just wanna paint the picture as broadly as I can that, you know, I. I think that the commissioners and and based on Commissioner Waring's recommendation is, how do we keep this thing running? And I just wanna identify some of those moving parts to doing this and and it will necessitate. Linnea coming and maybe in her monthly or bimonthly review, kind of saying, here's what our numbers and our trends are looking like. And here's what our TANF spend looks like. And and it kind of comes into further focus for me of, you know. It's it's not a big eye popping number on a monthly basis, but it's going to be a perpetual, you know. One of those numbers that just hits every month, so.
Thank you, Jared, but um that eighty, I do have a question about that, sorry, that eighty five thousand dollar. We repeat what that funding mechanism or reserve is.
So for the Human Services Fund, we do have a Human Services Fund levy. Right? That we have, just like we have a Roden Bridge levy, just like we have a general levy, right? Just like we have a a specific levy for early childhood and for mental health, right? And that levy um can make, gives us a property tax countywide that we use for human services. And we have maintained a fund balance in that fund of eighty five thousand dollars um kind of continuous year over year. Previously, we've kind of designed that, what the number that we put into that mill levy to keep us right about that level. Uh and I think that's gonna be something that's comes up during the budget process of, is that the right amount? Do we wanna dip into that amount? Um and as we have these continual conversations with Linnea and Alex, I think we'll be having a a little bit more focus on that number. Not just for the C cap program, but for all of our human services programs uh within the county, so.
Jared, you said one thing that really caught my attention, which was that you believe in two weeks we'll be hearing from. The state about other budget cuts that may have an impact on our county budget as a whole. It may be wise to defer this until we have that information and understand if we are suddenly in crisis and. Have to retract um across the board or pick and choose, neither of which are appealing, but may become our job. The other thing that you mentioned, Jared, is that we do have E cap, and I know that Kathleen and Kathy are trying to solve a. Three million dollar problem with a million dollars, or million dollar problem, the problem got bigger. A fund existing and maybe Kathy or Kathleen would speak to how they see this from an E cap perspective.
Yep, so I wanted to add that, so so historically, we've been able to work really closely with C cap. And oftentimes through our Strong Start Tuition Assistance Application Process. We have just a real quick questionnaire that helps us to find people who may be eligible for C cap. So we've been able to work closely with them to, you know, we've identified C cap eligible families. And then there are Strong Start eligible families. So one of the concerns that I have is. If we're limiting the number of families who are eligible for C cap. What happens with them, you know, and so like we were, we talked earlier about how we don't have. Additional funding streams to offset. So we're not sure how to pick up, you know, the funding for those.
For the four, you're talking. In general, so our mill levy was never meant to supplant existing funding. So when there's a freeze or a waitlist on. C cap funding. We don't have the financial resources to to then fund C cap eligible families. And then also try to fund all of the other families who don't qualify for C cap, but also can't afford childcare. So there's just like this squeeze that none of us have any control over. We work so closely with the C cap team, but. It's it's just been a tougher application cycle for families. More and more are C cap eligible. But then we're on this waitlist, almost maybe freeze type scenario. Um so just trying to figure out. You said more and more families are eligible for C cap. Does that mean there's? I know the answer, but I have to say it out loud, less demand for the Strong Start Tuition Assistant. Yeah, so. So we pick up where C cap leaves off. So if you make an income or you qualify for C cap, then that's something historically that. C cap takes care of and then we take care of the other sixty families who are still paying twenty to thirty percent of their income. On childcare, but don't qualify for C cap. Cause we also have a limited pot of money and then we're not able to fully fund our families, even if it was a perfect, fully funded. Scenario, um well, not fully funded. If it was fully funded, we could, but we weren't able to. Fully fund our families this year, um regardless of.
We we fell about a hundred thousand dollars short of where we wish we were because of the need. Of our local families.
What I hear you saying is that historically, there's been kind of two ways of. Um taking up the lane that C cap can occupy. Historically, the county has somehow budgeted and somehow worked through the missing administrative costs and. Using TANF reserve and whatever other creative ways we could, we've kept the C cap alive. I think that based on what I've just heard, it makes sense for us to stay in our lanes and figure out this C cap conundrum as a county. And allow E cap to continue their their land. So the question, I guess, that I circle back to then is, do we want to? Wait and see what the governor's thoughts are on reducing or changing numbers across the state? Before we try to make a decision here? And if we did defer for two weeks or so, Linnea, how would that? Effect you and Gina's outfit?
If we defer, I'm in the calendar, cause I could probably um even give you. So we received our account settlement for C cap last, early this week. And so if we deferred, we could even look at deferring to when we anticipate receiving August's. Settlement accounting for C cap and have another month of data and what that looks like for the month of August. That would include the start of school. Which changes some things because we we have Tyler District Preschool. Um and and so we could defer to that point, then we could bring another month worth of that financial data from C cap specifically. Which would be our Au- August data.
And do you have the cash to pay the families or the preschools and your staff? Like, you're not in a cash flow situation.
Correct, like we are, we are, we are good um currently. And have the allocation that we can use and we'll use it until it's used up. And then we will be, we will still have the ability to, I think, pay for those things we always have. And and I think, you know, looking at our budget coming up, like, what does that really look like? You know, as we're as we're working towards budget season, like into budget season, I think just trying to figure out how this fits.
That's what I was.
In regards to what we think we need, um but we we do have the cash flow. To to pay for another month and another month. I think, you know. Yeah, I think we, I I do think we have what we'll s- what we'll need at least through the end of the county fiscal year. And maybe would have a different look once the county fiscal year is over.
And and if I may, you you know, I, the the great thing is that we are not at our pressing cash flow precipice. Today, right? We we have our allocation of two hundred fifty thousand dollars. We will work through that. I think what we're seeing and what we're forecasting is we're, we're using ten percent of that right now per month. You know?
That we're using, uh I thought she said ten percent over what we should have used in a month, right? So so when we ran.
Same.
So when we ran our numbers this month, they give us what we spent and the percentage of our allocation that's been spent. So of the sixty eight counties. Samagow spent ten percent of their allocation. All sixty seven other counties spent under eight percent.
That's what you were saying.
So we are already ahead of the curve. And winning.
Winning the wrong way.
This race to to the no, to the no funding.
And that is related to your direct care.
Projection. Entire allocation.
The entire allocation.
So each month we do break out what those admin costs look like. So that is related to our entire allocation. However, the way that we've kind of re- put it into our accounting and how how we kind of pull it down, we pull that direct care first. Um and try to utilize that as much as, as much as we possibly can, knowing that that's the need.
Jared.
What I was gonna mention is, is we can look at this for a couple of months and get a better sense, because again, we're not in that. In that kind of crisis mode of management yet. We're just forecasting this, looking ahead. The the question on the table is going to be, do we, do we add four individuals to that? And and you know, there's nuance there as well. They may have gone back to school. We may see some shifts, particularly in this month, right? But do, you know, what what the concern is, is we're just, you know, adding to the monthly burn, right? What what we're going through on a monthly basis. And so, and and again, if we wait two weeks, I think for us, it's great. For data, right? To for data, so we better understand. But the challenge always is with this program that there's active need for care, right? And so those, that's, that's the inherent tension of, do we wait? Um do we, do we add to our monthly spend not knowing how much runway we have, right?
Well, the other, or the other thing to consider is what the governor may cut, but also what is our budget picture for our fiscal year twenty six? And if we take on four more families today, I would say we are committed to them as long as they need that. We can't just. Do it for two weeks and then drop it off. So I feel like we maybe need to get a better picture of our own financial situation for twenty twenty six.
And I think moving on, like even if the decision is, once we get some data, some understanding. And and maybe the decision is to move those four family, like those four kids in and under C cap and and shift that waitlist number. What happens when there's four more families that need it? What happens when there's another four families? Like, like the needle has to stop at some point. Or or we will not be able to to maintain overall.
And that is going to be the scenario and maybe not for this meeting, but. Strong start does not have the financial capacity to cover C cap. Children.
And I don't think that's the ask, right? Like, that's not the ask.
We're just, it's not the ask, but the children, some of the children are already in childcare, not being able to pay their bill. So. And not knowing if they qualify for C cap or not, they're actively not able to pay their bill.
Well, I think our numbers, just just to reiterate our numbers, like we pulled yesterday, there are four approved children on a waitlist. Knowing that they're on a waitlist and there are two unapproved families. And so that, you know. That is where that sits as of yesterday. And so those four families know, like, I think there is a knowledge that they're approved, but they're on the waitlist. And when somebody moves off that waitlist, they will move in, but we can't, but at this point today, like that, that is not gonna change.
Yeah, I know that C cap being on a waitlist has prevented some families from even applying. So I know that there is. For C cap.
I'm sorry, is it, oh, so there are, there's unmet demand, pent up demand because people know there's a waitlist, so why bother? The two families that you mentioned as not yet appro- unapproved, did they, were they denied? They don't qualify? Oh, okay. It wasn't like we just are, they're, they could be approved at any minute.
They're not actually uh unapproved. They're, I'm waiting for documents. So there is some documentation that needs to be um.
But they're still in the queue?
And so there's a timeline of people and if we do not get that documentation, then they move into like that unapproved world. And so thank you for clarifying.
I think that our inclination is to, my inclination is now to hold for two weeks. Get more information gathered. It could be for a month.
Well, yeah, let.
Have more clear information, both statewide, countywide and C cap wide.
Linnea, when do you get those hard August numbers?
Yeah, so we usually get those, the end of the, between the middle and end of the third week of the month.
So maybe um after this meeting, you could send me a note and let me know what the right date for you to come back with good data for August would be.
I think um, you know, obviously, my, I would like to say yes, you know, take on the four families, take on the two of the other families. But the issue is, this is one of dozens of asks that we're gonna be getting and we are gonna have to, recognizing the limitations. Of our budget for twenty twenty six, we are gonna have to weigh all of those, not individually, but together. And so to say yes right away to four or six families is just, I think, a little irresponsible. Knowing that there is other, there are other asks coming. So let's get some more information. Let's get a little. Bigger view, bigger picture of the additional asks from other, you know, areas that are gonna be coming our way. Get a best, better sense of our budget, get a better sense of your numbers, get a better sense of what the governor's doing and then um revisit this at whatever date. Works for for you, Linnae, in terms of having that data.
Absolutely.
Does that make sense? Um Gina, we haven't heard too much from you, other than the clarification of the two folks on the. That you're working with to qualify or or not right now. Is there anything else you'd like to add? You're the one closest to this in, in the county staff.
As far as actually working with families, um. Don't get a lot, a lot of applications, but like Kathy said, she refers them over so that we can see if they are eligible. So that, you know, that's what our C cap does. It helps families and, you know, that's my job to help families. I know. I understand the crunch and and all of these changes coming. But, you know, we have, we could, we're limited. We could only do what we can do. So I think we're, we have to just hold off, you know. And and I don't get a lot of, you know, the families, they understand, they drop off their applications and I proceed with the process. Put them on or off or ask for the rest of the documentation that I need. Kathy and I work really close together. And Greta as well with our Spanish population. So um it's working, but, you know, it's gotta. Something's gotta give or stop or something, cause it's gonna continue.
Gina, are you familiar with the Good Neighbor Fund and the Unidos Fund?
Um I am, I've looked, but not very much though.
So um I can share with you after this meeting. I'll make a note to stop by your office, but those are sources of sort of emergency funds. For um the community members. Um they're limited, of course, but the Good Neighbor Fund is sort of general, people who live and work in the. Region and then the Unidos Fund is specifically for Latino community members. Um I don't know, I don't know if we've ever funded childcare through the Unidos Fund. I'm on Kathy, which runs that. Um but it's certainly something that we, I imagine we could consider. Make a note of that. Um okay, anything else? Okay. Thank you all, um. I will wait to hear from you on that timing, Linnea. Um, okay, great. And then are we ready to move on to a B discussion regarding the financial challenges facing our early childcare centers? Or did we cover that?
No.
No, we did not.
Didn't, I know what this is, okay. All right, this is um.
That's Melissa.
Where, this is, I believe, regarding the Primetime uh Youth Care Center and potentially others. We have Carrie Welch from the Board of Directors, Right Stuff Community Foundation, as well as Melissa Merrill, who is the Director of Primetime. You see Melissa? Is Carrie with us? Yes, there she is. Okay, do you wanna go ahead and allow them both to unmute? And who will lead this conversation? Is this gonna be Melissa?
Yeah, I think it'll be me. So yeah, um I'm the director at Primetime. I've been the director for the last eight years. And basically, we are in such a financial crunch. That if we cannot have access to some emergency funding, we can. That if we cannot have access to some emergency funding, we can only keep primetime open until next Wednesday. It's that big and that simple all at the same time.
How did we get here?
What's that?
How did we get here?
Uh, that's kind of a combo of things. So. It has always been a struggle for primetime monetarily. We. Have tried to keep tuition covering about sixty percent, uh. At least sixty percent of our bills, be that tuition, or I mean, uh, payroll. Or, you know, whatever our basic bills, and then the rest is covered by grants because we are a nonprofit. Um, over the years, with the rising costs that have gotten harder and harder. Covid was kind of a double edged sword for us. There was lots of emergency funding, which was great. But that made our bank account look a lot better than it could have. And so then grant funders didn't wanna fund. Because we had some money, uh, so that didn't help. But lately, the biggest flux has been our enrollment numbers. We had between fifteen and eighteen preschoolers at the end of the school year last year. And we have five now. Some of those have switched schools, some of them have moved away and. You know, it, it's just been kind of a combination of things. So, and, and the C cap issue does. Present some of an issue for our enrollment. Um, we have had families come and. Look at the center, we give them the information, they see the cost, which unfortunately we have had to raise. So we raised our rate. In January, again in July, and we have a scheduled raise again next January. Uh, cause we did a financial planning class, uh, that Strong Start helped us set up. And so in the past, we had done basically a monthly calendar. Parents could sign up for as many or as few days a month as they wanted, and we billed them for the days that they came. Through this financial class, they said like, that's not sustainable. You need to go to. Like a monthly rate and you pay whether you're here or not. So we implemented that along with the pay, the rate hike. Uh, and had numbers stayed up, that would have probably worked. But unfortunately, our enrollment did not stay up. Uh, for a while, we had a waitlist. But then by the time we could hire staff that could meet all of the requirements for licensing. Those families had found alternate care. So the kids that were on the waitlist didn't, you know, didn't need us any longer. So we had hired the staff to accommodate those kids and then the kids weren't there. So then our payroll was way more than we were bringing in based on enrollment. So, uh, another issue that didn't help the budget shortfall was. Uh, the state going from CPP funding to UPK funding. Uh, we used to contract with the Norwood District School to take any CPP kiddos that. Either didn't, couldn't fit into their system or were overflow or whatever. So we had between two and seven CPP slots every school year. And that was five hundred dollars per child per month. Uh, so that was upwards of thirty-five hundred dollars a month on a good year. Uh, and when it switched to UPK funding, the three-year-olds didn't get the funding. The way they used to through CPP. So that funding avenue kind of dried up for us. The school district takes the four-year-olds and the UPK funding goes to them. We are, we can apply for UPK funding. Like, it's not that we can't, but because. Parents also, our parents also utilize the Norwood School District preschool. Oftentimes, they use that UPK funding to fund going to the Norwood District preschool because. Either way, they would have to pay us for a full day of care. So it doesn't make sense for them to give us the UPK funding and then still. Be paying Jessica Johnson at the school district. Uh, so, um. We've tried to combat a lot of this loss. Um, we cut our professional cleaning service. We now clean our own building. We, um, are currently working on taking our bookkeeping. We had been using ASAP. Uh, to do all of our bookkeeping for us, um, and we're working on bringing that back in-house, everything except payroll. Uh, and that will save us eleven hundred dollars a month. Uh, we also are looking at switching payroll companies. We found another payroll company. Uh, that can, can do what we need for a lesser charge than the one we're using currently. Um, and for the last two years, we have not run a summer camp program for school age kiddos because. It generally costs more than it brings in. So we stopped, we stopped running that program, trying to. Cut as many costs as we could. So that's kind of where we're at. Um, I don't know if anybody has any questions at this point, or if you want me to just kind of keep going with our ask.
We don't have any questions right now, Galina. It looks like you might.
Um, Melissa, I'm curious if you've had any discussions with the Norwood School District about. Considering expanding their preschool program. I know it's been out of the box thought, but, but I, knowing the way that the setup works there and that, that is only a half a day program during the school year. And the other half a day, kids a lot of time will bump over to primetime, which, um, necessitates more staff on your end. I'm just creatively thinking about. The ways the structure could be restructured potentially.
Um, yes, so we have been talking, so the. The Director and Lead Teacher for the Norwood District Preschool is Jessica Johnson now. Um, and we have had some conversations with her and even a short conversation with Mr. Bissell, the Superintendent. About whether they want to look at going to a full day preschool program and what that would look like. Um, instead of them running to half-day programs. That has been a very minimal conversation so far. It's been like, you know, in passing, like, yep, we're thinking about it. We're not really sure. We'd have to run the numbers kind of a situation. Um. So, uh. When we originally started looking at this and reached out to you guys, our first thought was like, man, we're losing tons of enrollment in our preschool classroom currently. Uh, and so is the district preschool. They usually have two full half-day programs running with fourteen kids each. They have nine kids in their preschool program this year for the school district. So they have a few more than we do. But not too many more. Uh.
Hang on, Melissa, did you say they normally serve twenty-eight kids, fourteen in the morning, fourteen in the afternoon, and they're down to nine?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, so originally, when we started looking at this problem, we thought, man, maybe we should close our preschool classroom. Because obviously we don't have enough kids to support running it currently. But then we realized if we do that. Even though it's only five, that's five families that lose out. Like those families still need care. They still need. A place for their kids to be. So. We run infant, toddler and preschool. And we looked at our numbers and. As of December first, every infant we have can be moved up into our toddler classroom. So if we had the funding to keep running through December. Then we could move those kids and eliminate one whole classroom. Unfortunately for the community, that eliminates eight infant slots. But at this point, it comes down to, we have to figure out how to keep the doors open for as many families as possible. And if that means cutting. The infant room, then that's probably what we're going to have to do. It is what we're going to have to do. And that way, no families lose care, plus all of those toddlers that we move up and the current group of toddlers that we have. Have somewhere to funnel into. Because the school district, even if they decide to go to a full day preschool program, that's not gonna happen until next August. So we couldn't do anything. We couldn't work with them on taking over those kiddos that we may have in preschool, at least until August. So this way. Zero families have to lose care if we can keep our infant room open until December first. And then, you know, transition those kiddos. That being said, as it is, we have fifteen kids in the center enrolled. Uh, we have six full-time staff and one part-time staff. So even if you guys funded us through December to make that transition. Our next grant cycle doesn't come. We would write the grants in January and February, but we wouldn't see any funding until April. Uh, so we would need help. We would need you all to step in and help us run until April. Through April, really. Uh. To do that, once we transition to only running two rooms instead of three, we would lay off additional staff. Um, because obviously with two classrooms and not three, we can run with less staff. We would end up running with. Four full-time staff and our office person who is currently a full-time employee would cut down to being a part-time employee. Um. So. Yeah, that's kind of where we're at. Um, I got it to you guys this morning, so it didn't make it into your packet, but I did send all of this information. Kind of broken down for you guys. Uh. So in the end, the ask is sixty-five thousand dollars. As long as the grant money that was allocated through Strong Start. This year can come through. Which is forty thousand dollars. There's an October payment and a January payment from Strong Start that we would be expecting. If we're open and. Able to continue. Uh, so with their funding, we would still need sixty-five thousand dollars from the county. To make it to the end of April, when the funding would come in from some of the other grants that we write. In the, in the beginning of the year.
I have a follow-up on Commissioner Gleason's question about working with the Norwood School District, um, preschool. It sounded like they're way under-enrolled as you are. And so is it possible to just combine those two programs? At least in the short term, if they had fourteen spaces in the morning and the afternoon and they only have nine total. Is it possible for the five, rather than closing your infant room, that you, um, temporarily close the, the preschool room? And consolidate those operations?
Um, unfortunately, no. So we run on two different childcare licenses. Not that our families couldn't utilize the Norwood School District. Most of them do. So we end up with those kids come to us either eight to noon. And then back at three forty-five till they get picked up and they just leave for a couple of hours. Or it's the other portion of the day and they leave at twelve to three forty-five and go to, to Jessica's class. Um, there, if they all went all day to Jessica's. There is a lunch gap where she closes that they could not be there. Uh, and if the kids are there all day, there has to be a nap or quiet time that is not offered. Um, you, that's, and you, the rules for the amount of time for UPK that students have to come also affects that. So like three-year-olds only come for like three hours in the morning, but the four-year-olds come in the afternoon for almost four hours. Because she has to meet certain time requirements for that. Uh, so. I guess the, the short answer is no. They couldn't, we couldn't close our preschool temporarily and give the, all those kids to Jessica. Um, if the school district. Right. So there would be that gap in the middle when Jessica closes her classroom from ten thirty to twelve. Where there was no care, plus she would have to figure out how to have nap. When she doesn't, that's not part of her day currently.
I'm just thinking about how to really creatively restructure to save primetime, basically. And I am curious if potentially Kathleen or Kathy could speak to like how the. Telluride preschool within the school district manages that with the different age children and requirements? What, what does that look like?
You have to come up to the microphone, please, both of, whoever likes to address that.
And, uh, please, I mean, pardon me, I'm just trying to like creatively think about. Some way to potentially work this out, um.
One addition also to the limitations with the district preschool is that I believe they close at three or something like that, where primetime stays open quite a bit longer. Uh, so the Telluride District Preschool has two classrooms. Uh, they have at least six full-time staff and they are able to offer five full day. Days to all of their children. So I think that they're serving about thirty-something children in their class. And so that allows, they also get a lot of UPK funding. So, you know, they, they have enough space in their program to be able to accommodate UPK.
Thank you. That's.
I can add to that piece too. They also are received, there is also, I think, ten or twelve C cap. They have children that are in that district preschool as well. So, so there, there is that piece too.
And primetime, a lot of primetime families are Montrose County and that is on a C cap freeze. So C cap is not available through Montrose County for those families. Do you have something to say? Your hand up.
Yeah, but I'm still piecing this together. Melissa, hearing what Kathy just said, have you had a chance to speak with the Montrose County Commissioners as well?
Um, we have not, actually. I don't know why I did not think to reach out to them. Um. So, yeah, to speak to the school question, uh, the school district preschool does end at three forty-five. So that would not be the full extended day for those kiddos. Um, and. We, we do have kids from both counties, um, and we do have. Four or five C cap families currently. Um, but we do have others. We have four fam, three families, four kiddos. Who have been in recently to ask about care. And I think three of those kiddos would qualify for C cap. And with the current situation, like they won't be able to come. Uh, they would be on the waitlist.
What is the breakdown, do you know, Melissa, between Montrose and San Miguel County enrollment of your fifteen kids?
Um. I think we have five or less of our fifteen that are coming from Montrose County currently.
Okay, that, that sounds like something you might have to confirm, which I totally understand. Um, I mean, we're kind of making the sausage here, but, um. Maybe I would ask, um, the Bright Futures and Strong Start folks, cause I know. That in addition to providing funding for preschools, you often like work with them on their operations. Is that correct? Have you been involved yet in this situation and, um, how has that gone?
Yeah, we've been involved for quite a while. Melissa and I work together a lot. So, um. Constantly brainstorming and trying to evolve with all of the changes. Um, they have learned a lot. They've worked really hard. They know how. They know the need of the community and all of the staff is willing to do whatever it takes to meet that need. Uh, the funding piece is just the trickiest part. So, yeah, there, we, we work together quite often.
Yes, we do. Uh, the number is five for Montrose County families.
Oh, so it was. You were just right. Uh, here's another question. Um, what about, and again, I feel like I'm, I'm, we're. This is not necessarily the time to do this, but what about rather than talking about. What about rather than talking about, um, you folding into the Norwood School District Preschool? What about them folding into you because you offer, um, a bigger, you know, the complete package of services? Has that been considered? And I don't, I'm not suggest, I don't want to make any political missteps here, but. It just seems so clear that we have two programs right next door to one another that are under-enrolled and.
Right, well, and really, so. I think. Uh, they only have four kids that aren't ours. We have not had the discussion of them becoming us. Over the years, we have talked to them about just taking over the entire program, but funding has always been the issue. Like they, the school district does not have the money to take over an entire infant toddler and pre, and you know. And then expand their preschool program. We have not talked about it the other way around. Um, but I don't know that the school district would give up their, their preschool program. They would potentially change it to a full-day program. But. I don't think that they would give up their program.
Why do you say that, Melissa? If they're running a program that is overstuffed and under.
Because it's not usually.
So this is a.
This is literally in all the years. I have worked at primetime twenty-five years. This is literally the first year I can think of that their district preschool is not maxed out. And I think part of that is that wraparound care. If parents can't afford to come to me. Then they're finding somewhere else to send their kiddo. And so they can't do the shuttle back and forth. We currently shuttle those kids back and forth for parents. To the district class and back. If they end up choosing another program or, you know, going with a babysitter or a home provider or whatever they're doing with those kiddos. Those people aren't going to come and go multiple times a day, bringing them to preschool. And, you know, whatever. So I think. Our enrollment. Is potentially causing part of their enrollment issue.
Yeah, the two are quite in- intrinsically linked from being a part of the program. Um, and just kind of knowing the ins and outs of it. It's, it's convenient for families to have their kids go to primetime. Af- or vice versa, if they're enrolled in the Norwood School District Preschool because it is only a half a day program. Um, I mean, what I'm hearing about funding ask and. You know, knowing our potential limitations, I. I would ask Melissa. Uh, if you would entertain also approaching Montrose County to see if they would be willing to. Contribute some to this ask, um.
Sorry, Galena, didn't mean to interrupt. Uh, I am not opposed to that. The issue is. As it stands, we have enough money to make it to next Wednesday.
Sure.
And I don't know that we can get a meeting scheduled and a discussion had. So enough. Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, um. I think the immediate funding needs, you know, what, I think we try to hash that out now, but that sixty-five thousand dollar ask, that is like. The total amount that you would need to operate until April, correct?
Correct. As long as we get the forty from Strong Start.
Sure.
That we are, you know, hopeful to continue to get.
Just one second, is that at risk, Kathy and Kathleen?
It is not at risk. Yeah, we were able to receive, um. I think this year. Was it? I think it was an eighty-five thousand dollar loan and we have that in orderly payments. So their next payment is coming up in October.
And it's not a loan, it's their capacity building grant. And it, our grants get paid out on a quarterly basis, so they've already gotten half of it. And then they're due for the other half, um, one payment in October and one payment in January. Okay, did you hear that, Michelle or Melissa? I hope that's.
Uh, yes.
So, um, do you have it scratched out, Melissa, what you would need right now to just continue operating? Um, let's say up until. Decem- or yeah, December or even when that October payment comes in, um, from Strong Start?
Um, to get us to October. Just in payroll, we need twenty-five thousand dollars.
And you're expecting forty from Strong Start in October, correct?
Um, twenty-one.
Twenty.
Twenty-one, and then the final payment is in January.
Can I ask a Strong Start question? You know that there's a structure and a cadence to these grants, but is it possible to do an emergency release of those funds?
Yes, E cap has already approved that based on the decision made here today.
Can you clarify or say a little more about that?
They, E cap. Wanted to know the outcome of whether or not the county would be providing any additional emergency funding to. Primetime. Because our grant will not fully fund them through April. I think it's going to take our grant. Plus emergency funding from San Miguel County and then potentially from Montrose County as well. Am I understanding that correctly, Melissa?
Yes.
So you, just to confirm, you, you will depend on the forty thousand coming from Strong Start? And then you still have a sixty-five thousand dollar deficit. To get you to the end of April when you anticipate other grant funds maybe available. Um, did you get your question answered, uh?
Almost, um. Strong Start folks, if you were to release grant funding. Early and Melissa was to receive forty thousand dollars in the next seventy-two hours. That would, I think, keep her going through. October at the minimum?
We, we only received approval to release the, the October payment.
Okay.
We didn't, we didn't get approval.
So then. Melissa through December, but it could get it through October.
Right.
But correct, Melissa? I'm still trying to make sure I've got all your numbers.
Uh, no problem. Yes. So if we got the twenty thousand dollars now from Strong Start. Uh, we would be about five thousand short getting to October first. We need twenty-five to get to October first.
Got it.
Which would give us a little bit of time to reach out to Montrose County and also, you know, get back with you guys and. You know, see where we're.
This is right.
By closing our infant room in December, and the reason we can't close it before December is because not all of our babies would be old enough to move up. Uh, but by closing it in December, then with current enrollment. Uh, our tuition would cover payroll. Starting in January.
So this, then you wouldn't need the full sixty-five, the sixty-five.
We would need it because we, that, a chunk of it is covering. From now till December and then. It would, the rest of it would cover our regular bills, electric, water, insurance, those kinds of things. Our enrollment would only cover payroll.
Okay, I, that's helpful. Let me ask you this though, the sixty-five, does that assume that you would close the infant room or?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be with the infant room closing starting December first.
Okay, I mean, that makes me really nervous, closing an infant room. Um, I know you've got those eight kids covered, but. Babies keep getting born, Kathleen.
Melissa, do you have a waitlist for your infant room right now?
Um, we have one parent who reached out and said that they are interested in care starting in January in the infant room. But that is the only infant currently. Like waiting in the wings or whatever. We have eight slots available, but they, we don't have eight people waiting for them.
So right now you have eight.
And right now we have.
Oh.
Six infants enrolled.
And they all move up starting in December.
Yeah, they can all move up to the toddler room starting in December.
Um, Melissa, can, I've put you on hold for a second and talk with Keycap just back and forth.
Absolutely.
Great, don't go away.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Kathleen and Kathy, in our previous conversation, we talked about lanes. And I know that we historically have handled C cap and I think we've agreed that. In some fashion, we want to continue that and we're going to work on that soon. Um, historically, I think that E cap and the funding from the voters that was passed. Um, has been for. Funding preschools, and I know that you're doing that. In your recollection, has there been emergency grants made for this kind of save through E cap fund?
There hasn't been. We have had one request previously back in twenty nineteen that was denied. Um, but. There hasn't been any other requests after that.
Do you recall the circumstances of that denial? Was it based on, it wasn't going to make a difference or? It was a too big a number to be manageable or?
At the time, it was the availability of funding.
Meaning that there wasn't enough that E cap offers at the time to cover the request? Um, can you remind me of the reserves for E cap currently?
Five hundred thousand. Earmarked for a capital campaign.
Tell me about that earmark. Is that a, have they approved earmark? Is that a?
No, that, that is what E cap.
Conceptional earmark that.
Yeah.
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 Can you see where I'm headed?
Yeah.
Commissioners, I think that Melissa is willing to. Get on the agenda with our neighbors down in Montrose County. If I've got the numbers at all clear in my head, it seems like a third of the sixty-five thousand dollar ask is. A third of the fifteen kids. And Melissa, tell me if I've got that right, it would be roughly twenty-two. Thousand dollars you'd be asking for. You might round up to twenty-five just to give yourself a little breathing room. Um, if we are able to get E cap to board to release funding. Emergency funding quickly, that would keep the lights on as your plan that you submitted this morning. Would, um, unfold through October. And if you were successful in Montrose. Maybe we could do a three-way split where. E cap comes up with twenty-five, we come up with twenty-five and Montrose comes up with twenty-five. That's a perfect world. If any one of those were to drop out or decline, then we're back to discussing whether or not the county. Can make the save and we'd be farther along in our budget process. And have a little better picture of what we have available to save with. Um, knowing that E cap does have. Five hundred thousand dollars in reserve, um. Earmarked, but not firmly so, or capital campaigns. Gives me hope that if at the end of the day, there's, um, a shortfall, but at least there's a place to discuss. And I'm not trying to raid the E cap larder, but I am cognizant that we did put this funding in place for. Rainy days and crises and whether or not we are building something new or whether we are saving something existing. To me, I'm not as worried about the earmarking as I am worried about the families and keeping the lights on.
Um, thank you for that, Lance. I, I think it's really important that Bright Futures. No matter who is, you know, paying in, by way of emergency funding, that, that Bright Futures works very closely with primetime. And coming up with a solid fundraising plan. Um, relative to it, you know, historically, they aren't bringing in enough intuition to cover. Their costs. I think, Melissa, you said about sixty percent. So. You know, I think that it's important that we get together and come up with a fundraising plan of how. To, to meet that, that gap and have grants, additional grants throughout the state and regionally. Be that subsidy for primetime.
That sounds like a terrific idea. Um, I also, you know, we've only been at this, I don't know, twenty, thirty minutes, but, um. I wonder too, if you could help them take another look at their strategy and their collaboration with the Norwood School District. I understand this is the first time we've ever had this kind of, um, excess capacity of both of the programs. But the reality is we do have that right now. And even if it's just a temporary consolidation of some sort. Um, I really feel like we should have, um. As many people with knowledge of how to run a preschool, including, you know, Melissa as well as Jessica, you know, try to get our heads around this. Because, um, yeah, I think it's, it's not just a money problem, it's an operational problem.
Well said, Commissioner, took the words out of my mouth. And Melissa, a question for you is. If sixty-five thousand dollars were to appear from the county. Um, in time. How long or what would happen next? I think the Commissioner Brown just gave us the roadmap that needs to happen, but. We could make this save, but then come next year. We don't want to become the go-to sixty-five thousand dollar, keep primetime afloat.
Um, yeah, absolutely. So that was part of the reason we closed the infant room. At least temporarily, so that we can make sure, because if tuition is covering our payroll. Then the grants that we receive will cover our bills. So that.
There is an emergency ask in your mind.
Yes.
And it's because of the current infants that are not yet quite old enough, along with a lot of other factors.
Yeah, yeah. So we can't. Implement that part of the plan until the infants are old enough without kicking families out of the program, which obviously we don't want to have to do.
I don't think any of us want to do that.
Right, exactly.
I, I also wonder if Bright Futures could. Assist or provide resources for outreach to potentially. Um, get some more enrollment and awareness of the program that exists and.
That's not really our lane.
Okay, fair enough.
And we can do that. I mean, we can spread the word.
Strength is.
Yeah.
I mean, we can promote overall, all of our programming across the county.
That's, this is, it's a fairly small community and close-knit community that you serve, Melissa, so I, I can't imagine you haven't already. Sent out that word, but definitely double down on that and let families know that.
Right.
Is, um.
And we have been, you know, we have a couple that we think we could enroll maybe into the toddler room, but we've been holding off. Because obviously we didn't want to enroll them. And then unfortunately, if we didn't, you know, find a solution to this issue. Have to immediately, you know, unenroll.
That makes a lot of sense. So wh- what is the best strategy for kind of working on the operations? Is that something that, how, what would you suggest, either Melissa or Kathleen? Who can lead that? Um, or who can assist Melissa with that?
Um, the best long-term strategy?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll continue.
You can work.
Yeah, we would happily.
It's an ongoing.
Yeah, we would happily continue that discussion with.
Thank you.
Bright Futures and Strong Start.
I know you have a lot of experience in this field, Kathleen, having run the preschool of my children instead of it.
If, if, knowing that you're on E cap and that you have actual experience with your children in. Both, um, organizations and contacts within the school district with Mr. Bissell. Would you be willing to, to lend a little help to Kathy and Melissa in those conversations if they need it?
Uh, absolutely. Yes, and I've started to develop, uh, you know, a stronger relationship with Mr. Bissell and. I connect with him quite often, so I, I would be happy and willing to help assist in, in, uh, making connections and. Yeah, being a conduit, so, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Melissa, I think what we are leaning towards as a Board of Commissioners is. Asking Kathleen and Kathy to go back to their board and release the emergency funding more swiftly. Knowing that their board was hoping we would commit today. Um, we are going to ask you to set a meeting with the Montrose County Commissioners. Request a third of the sixty-five. We are going to, in our minds, in my mind at least, reserve a third of the sixty-five. Out of the county budget and hope that the E cap board would consider. Participating as a third partner for that missing final third. I hope that that would get us all through this bumpy patch. Uh, a minimum of pain for any one organization, but a show of partnership to keep you afloat. And then that you'd be able to take your existing financial plan. And either implement it or perhaps with Kathy and Galena's. and either implement it or perhaps with Kathy and Galena's and your uh renewed efforts and continued efforts. And working with um Todd Bissell and Jessica Johnson, perhaps come up with a really novel solution that no one's thought of yet.
And I hope it doesn't include closing that infant room permanently. I mean, we have so few infant spots in the county and um I I appreciate that you're thinking back creatively, Melissa, in the short term, but I don't think that's a a long-term solution.
Yeah, and we hope not as well.
Yeah.
You know.
I figured, yeah.
You know, that's, it's never our hope to have to close any of ours, our programs, but obviously in the short term, we needed a drastic solution, so.
Um, Carrie Welch, we haven't heard from you, and I know you've been here patiently. Is there anything you'd like to add? As a member of the Wright Stuff Foundation Board?
No, you know, um, basically the girls have said it all. I mean, um, Kathy and Kathleen's helped us a lot. Um, we've increased the enrollment, but we did it gradually, so it's not really hurting the families that bad. Um, I think without able and Norwood is, it's just so with the people traveling and then having to pay so much for childcare, with them not being able to get assistance, I think that's like Melissa says, they go off and find something else. But the kids get so much more from being through the prime time.
Thank you for that. All right, any, yes, Kathleen.
Before we move on, I want to make sure I have the timing correct. E cap will be releasing the October grant payment early.
It's out early.
Like to when I get back to the office. That will enable Melissa and primetime to cover, you know, the immediate payroll and expense needs. And then Kathy and I will also be asking E cap to release some emergency funding as well. That could potentially be a third, a third, and a third of E cap emergency funding, San Miguel County and Montrose.
That's, that's exactly right, but let's talk about that timing. Um, um, Melissa, when you receive the twenty one thousand from, you know, your early payment of the October grant, um, how long will that get you? Mean it, sub-sub question, how soon do you need additional money?
Uh, so that will get us to October first.
Okay, that's right.
Uh, and then we, you know, so then we would need the additional funding starting October first from whoever else, however else that comes.
Okay.
Melissa, um, question whether you would like me to help connect you with Montrose County Commissioners via email? Um, I'm happy to do like an email introduction if you need tha-that connection.
That would be wonderful, Galena. Thank you.
Yeah.
And um, Galena, I wonder if you want to go so far as to lay out our suggestion, or you think that's presumptuous?
Um, I'm, if Melissa feels that is appropriate, I would absolutely say this is what we, the, you know, conclusion we came to today, um, with hopes that Montrose County could contribute to a portion of these funding needs.
Would you be so bold? Uh, name the number?
Uh, yes.
Great.
Yeah, breaking it down.
For that.
Yes.
Great.
Great. That's, that's, that's the perfect job for you. Thank you for.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, Melissa, I don't know if you were um listening to our meeting for the previous agenda item.
The C cap discussion?
Yes.
Yes, I was on for that.
Great. Um, I think what you've seen us do is the same thing. Where we're trying to get our arms around the state, we're trying to understand our own county budget, and we're not willing to move. We're trying to go slowly as we can so we have as much data as we can. I hope you don't take that as we're not interested in helping, because that is not how I feel. I don't think it's how eh either of my fellow commissioners feel. But we are trying to distribute and partner and delay, if you will, until the last possible moment so that all of us have the clearest picture. You've done a great job of of setting us up for understanding. And I want to just reassure you that we are not leaving you as partners, we're just trying to um get some other partners involved.
Absolutely.
Um, I'm just looking at my calendar and October first is really just a few weeks away. And um, you, we know that at best, you're, you know, can only fund through October first and given the fact that you're taking care of children and needing to meet with Montrose County and so forth. Um, and I just don't want to have to ask you to come back here in two weeks saying in two weeks, we're going to be out of money. So I wonder if this board would be um willing to commit without any other commitments, um, at least part of our third.
That's a really good question. I know that from doing partnership funding, it's always a bit of a dance to see who goes first.
Sure.
I'd be willing to go first.
Okay.
And commit a third of sixty five. And then that would perhaps make the conversation with Montrose County easier. And perhaps make the conversation with E cap more easier as well. That's a really good idea.
Okay, so I'm I'm also doing that. I mean, we probably would need to know more of an exact number if we're going to make a motion today, or um is that something we need to wait for till next week anyway? Looking at Jared and Carmen, back and forth.
I, I, I would ask for a motion to approve because this is not budgeted currently, right? We would think about which is our best pocket to take out of all of those things. But ostensibly, I think, um, I would rather leave it till next week, but we'd be talking about twenty one thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. Effectively, uh.
Maybe Melissa could just confirm um that exact ask. You said six, was, I don't know if it's sixty five even, is that right?
Sixty five even.
All right, so we would do a third of this and we would approve it next week just to not rush the, rush it. Kathleen, did you want to, wait, why can't we do it this week?
You could, but.
It's not noticed, it's not, there's no motion, so I'd like to allow the public that.
Perfect.
Availability to review and Melissa could provide um her request.
How would you?
I think it just makes it a little clean.
It, we, we can agendize it to make sure that we're walking through the process. We can actually put the packet that Melissa pulled together that did not make it into the packet and just to make sure we're, we're doing it the cleanest way. And if if we could ask you, Melissa, if there's any updates um that you get in the next couple of days, great, we'll put that into the packet for next Wednesday and and make that action uh at that point. And by that point, we will also probably suggest where we as the county will uh take the funds from.
I was just going to add that I can also reach out to E cap to release all of Melissa's grant. And, right, so then.
We're shit off.
So, yeah. The, instead of just the October payment, you know, it would be the full forty two thousand that we could give her and then, you know, still have E cap consider um taking some from our um reserves, which I'm, I'm sure they would be in favor of.
It doesn't sound like for cash flow purposes, that's necessary, but that's generous of you just to pad the bank account a little bit from Melissa. Yeah.
In two weeks and taking a lot of time off from her day job, which is important and it would allow us all again, more time to gather data, more time for conversations with the school district. Um, I think that's a really elegant solution, Kathleen, to take some time pressure and some financial pressure. We see that.
Um, then, one more request, Melissa, because um since my primetime days, I have new email addresses and whatnot, and I can't find your contacts in my contacts. Um, could you email um me or to B O C C at San Miguel County C O dot gov? Just email your address to that address so I make sure I have your contacts when I'm connecting you with Montrose County Commissioners.
Uh, yeah, so it's B O C C at San Miguel County dot gov.
Just send it to me, Melissa.
Send it to you, Carmen. Got it.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Carmen to get to me, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any loose ends? No? Okay, I mean, you're welcome to come back next week when we um consider this. I can't imagine it's going to need any more input or conversation. I'm, again, you all have lots of work to do, so don't worry about needing to do that. Do you guys agree, the other commissioners? We have some pretty firm direction here.
I think we have a clear picture from you personally, Melissa, and we'll have your information in our packet for the public as well as for us to review again. Like Jared said, if you do have any changes in the next day or two, uh, feel free to update, but otherwise get that to Carmen by next probably Monday morning, and it will be in the packet, correct, Carmen?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, hang in there, Melissa. Thank you for your twenty five years of service to primetime, and we know what, what, how hard it is, and we really appreciate your s- being so creative with your solutions and um we'll just keep working on it.
Perfect. Thank you all so much.
Take care.
You too.
Okay, thanks, ladies.
So welcome.
Um, we have a few more items on our agenda. It is now twelve twenty. I definitely need a break right now. Sorry, Linnea. Um, I know, I don't know if you were, wanted to be part of that or you were just sitting here for item eight C. But, okay, uh, yeah, reality. Um, so what would everybody like to do? I would actually like to eat as in addition to taking a little break. Um, just so my brain keeps working. Do we want to um we can defer these to next week, although we do have a pretty full agenda, or we could take like a twenty-minute break and come back and finish out our agenda? What, what is everybody's fancy?
Um, I mean, considering we have Linnea.
Let's finish.
Yeah.
Okay, do you mind if I eat while we talk?
And this is such an item we'll take five.
Okay, let's do that, yeah. But I just have to have a handful of my.
I also.
Want to do that with Melissa, having not met her before, but I know you fairly well.
Also eat a beef stick.
No worries. I understand.
All right, but we are gonna without talking with our mouth, we'll move on to item H C, and then we'll decide how, what we want to do with the rest of our day after that. Um, this is consideration of the chair's signature on the financial reports from our Human Services Department for um June and July twenty twenty five. When it's time for a motion, we'll read that full out.
Sounds good. Um, so what you guys will see in the first part of the packet is going to be financials for June and July. Um, I think, you know, in in regards to the E D T and the registry, that's our first part of our fiscal year, just kind of as, as we're edu-, as I'm educating myself around our financials, I want to continue to provide that so I I learn as I'm speaking. The other piece is that you'll see our balance sheet, our revenues, our expenditures, and our M O's for our last month of our fiscal year. I think the important thing to to point out will be our M O. Um, it will show where we landed in our allocation for the year, so that is fifty, you know, we have now spent fifty percent of what we had budgeted for the year of twenty five within the county. Even though our allocation is over and we've started a new allocation, that is our fifty percent. So, so you'll see where we kind of ended as the, a- a- as where we ended with our allocations and and what was left over and 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 how it got, you know, just kind of ended. So, so what you'll see is that, as, as I discussed in our previous conversation, um, administration fee, our funds around um C D H S and HIC puff will be overspent, as we know, will be overspent for a long time. Um, and so those are, those are solutions that, that the directors and the state are really trying to come up with. How do we provide the best service to the community with the appropriate staffing? And so I know I had this conversation with the Uray County Board yesterday. There were some questions around it, and there has been conversation at the state level around freezes of hiring, um, along with some attrition, um, i-in the larger counties, so lessening their staff through attrition. I think as far as San Miguel County goes, I think where we are with our staff is our kind of bare bones. It is the amount of people that we need to provide services to our community. Um, I I think that as, as our seasons shift and change, we see that fluctuation, but I do feel like we are staffed correctly for our need in our communities. So I just want to point that out as, as we see the special session happening and cuts being, being taken care of, I I just really want to point out that I do feel we're staffed correctly. And and so those are kind of the big, the big points other than childcare, which we spent an hour talking about. So, um, those were kind of the big points in the financials. And so I guess I would request uh the chair's approval on our financials, um, balance sheet, revenue, expenditures, E D T, check registry, and our M O report.
Any simple questions?
So moved.
I'll, I'll second that.
How do you vote?
I.
I smell the motion passes unanimously. Easiest thing we've done today.
No, I, and then I just have one more piece kind of in my agenda is just to kind of talk about caseload reports. Um, I like bringing that to you guys and making sure you understand where our cases sit. I think it's important to kind of point out that, that we have over the last three months kind of seen a drop in our Medicaid numbers. Um, over the last three months, that seems to be trying to understand, we're trying to understand what that means, right? And so, um, I, I think it's cost of living. I think it's.
Do you think people are leaving?
Possibly. I think that we are seeing people not applying. Maybe we're seeing people who are not qualified because they're having to work that one extra job. Um, and so now they're not qualifying. So I think there's a lot of factors here. We're trying to kind of date it to the data of what that looks like and why. Um, and and really trying to understand what that looks like. We're hoping as offseason comes, our numbers go back up, right? Like the, like that happens for us, um, as, as we see the season shift um in the fall. And and wanting to make sure that, that we we let, you know, the county know, like, the services are available. We are business as usual despite what maybe is happening at the federal level. I think that's really important for us to give that messaging. That's what we've been told by the state. We are continuing to be business as usual. We will continue to work to a- approve people as, as the state statute and rule lays out. And that currently we're not looking at restraints in relation to H R one yet.
I think that is a good point, and I was thinking, as you've shown me these declining numbers, showed us these declining numbers, that there may be a misunderstanding in the community that Medicaid has already been cut, and so people are thinking, oh, why bother to apply? Um, and I would really support the idea of working with Megan Knowles to get the word out that Medicaid funding is still available, I'm correct, right?
Correct.
We have the funding, right?
Correct.
Do you expect that to be in place through the year, calendar year twenty six?
Um, through the state fiscal, well, throughout the federal fiscal of twenty six. So, so we are not seeing any big changes in funding for Medicaid until next October. Um, there will be some changes in some expectations around determination and ongoing determination, but we're not seeing a change in funding specifically around Medicaid.
When does all that determination, the, the new determination criteria kick in?
Yeah, so we see part of it kicking in at the first of the year, and we'll see the rest of it kick in in the federal, I suppose, twenty six.
Uh huh. Okay.
And so we'll see, we'll see some things changing in the way that we're, we're maybe collecting some information or, or needing some information from our clients, along with kind of the, their may what, what one of those things was a six-month redetermination on Medicaid. In my understanding, that will start in January.
Okay.
So in January, we will start redetermining Medicaid every six months instead of every twelve months.
What about the work?
So the work requirements, they are working on seeing how that's, how that's going to play out. We have to make some changes within our systems. Um, so in our C D M S system, there's going to have to be some changes. How are we tracking that? How is it, what does it actually look like? They have some small, some small work groups put together at the state level with county partners that are working on trying to ensure that we do the best job to track that accurately, as laid out in the bill, but also to allow what that looks like for clients. What, what does that work requirement look like? And and how do we, how do we ensure that our clients are able to do it?
Yeah.
And that it's tracked fairly.
And when does that kick in?
So my understanding is that that will kick in next October.
Okay.
Is my understanding with all the other work requirements.
Okay.
So they're trying to just come up with a plan while we have the time to work through that.
Okay, I, I think this is where the press release, um, and Megan, this is obviously your department, not, I'm not your boss, but maybe you talk with your boss and see if this is something that we um could issue a press release on, because I'm looking at a high of six eighty-five in December of twenty four, and we know those numbers are lower than they were during COVID. Yeah, across seventy-five people, uh, and that means seventy-five people, maybe they've all left the area. It's hard to, hard to imagine, but people walking around without health insurance, and that's not good for anybody.
Yeah, and people, I mean, so this includes our, our, our CHIPS numbers too. Yeah, and people, I mean, so this includes our, our, our CHIPS numbers too, so our kids that are getting child only medical support and kids age out and then we lose people, so I think there's a variety of reasons why we've lost people, but I agree with you Commissioner that these numbers, as I've watched them drop over the last couple of months, kind of made me question like, what's, what is the reasoning and how, how do we understand it?
I appreciate you pointing that out, I mean, this also has implications for like our medical centers.
Correct.
People are uninsured and they go there for care and they can't pay, I mean, we should be using as much of the Medicaid program as we can always, but particularly now while we still have it.
Yeah, and as we know, HR1 has a lot of ramifications around those providers um, and Medicaid, so, so I think that that's another just Medicaid related issue to HR1 and, and, and understanding how we incorporate those new things within that bill into our existing programs, but I do think that there's a provider side of that, that, that we will see happen that, that is not necessarily within our office.
Right.
But, but can contribute to some of that.
Okay, anything else? Were there any other numbers, enrollment numbers you wanted to discuss?
I, I mean, I think that I was, I was, I was interested that our staff numbers went up as much as they did, so, so we're seeing some weird, like, again, trends are, are different for me, so I'll just continue to bring those and have the conversations with you guys. Um, we won't see anything change in our SNAP programming until October 2026 and we don't know what that's going to look like as far as the county portion regarding the percentage paid back to the federal government for our error rates. So, so we don't know what that's going to look like at the county level, um, and that's kind of that whole systems conversation we had in our CCAP conversation is like we're being squeezed in a couple of different ways and what, what is important for our, our most vulnerable populations and, and how do we make sure that those i- it, the need's going to go up and the availability is going to go down or going to shift and the workload for our staff is going to increase, so I think just making sure that, that we are understanding how that all looks together.
Okay.
Yeah, and that, that's really kind of all I had on our caseload report.
Okay, well, we're happy to have these discussions anytime that we could be helpful when they are, anytime you feel like there's more to share, so don't be shy about getting on the agenda.
Absolutely, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for all your time today.
Yeah. Okay, um, so now we have left management reports and Commissioner updates, I have to say, I do have a lot to share in Commissioner updates, I could do it next week, but it's meaty stuff, so, um, at least in my opinion, I definitely need a break before doing that, so again, how do you all feel about the, the rest of the agenda?
Don't we try to do manager matters because Mike is on and he could maybe monitor or see how he's doing, Mike, are you hanging tough?
Mike is not.
Mike is gone, oh.
He.
We can take a full on break and make one here.
I'm, I may suggest if it's okay, we, we just pause until 1 o'clock and then
let's do that.
Yeah, unless, unless that doesn't work with anybody's schedule.
That's fine.
Is that right for you Lena, and then, do you have a hard, all right, let's pause till 1 o'clock, um, we will be back there then, thank you. Do you have a, um?
You're still on.
Okay.
It is 1:08 and we are back for the continuation of our August 27th special meeting. We have, um, we are up to item nine, which is manager matters. And then we have Fisher updates and then we adjourn. So let us carry on with manager matters. Mike, would you like to begin or are you going to allow Jared to take this today?
Well, Jared's welcome to start, but I have several items I'd like to share with the board. And I apologize for leaving my video off just for internet reasons.
That's fine. Why don't you go ahead as usual, Mike?
Very good. I wanted to inform the board that we had solicited um, a conversation and demo with T-Mobile regarding cell phones for the county. And after testing, we verified that the areas of concern for commuting employees as well as employees that are working out in the field that are up Dallas Divide through the Norwood Canyon and over towards Rico are all night and day improved under the T-Mobile system. Um, they have a Starlink backup satellite built into the phones. So when it goes out of cell coverage, it instantly transitions. So when it goes out of cell coverage, it instantly transitions over to Starlink satellites. We see this as a huge improvement in not only our employee's safety, but public safety and our ability to report incidences when they happen. Our quote, our initial quote we've received, which we'll be discussing during the budget process is very similar to what we are currently paying. So we're not looking at a large request or increase to make this type of transition. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that that is a likely ask as we get into the budget season.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yesterday Jared, Heather Widlin, myself and a few others, including Sheriff Coalt, demoed a new evacuation system and plan a way for our officers when they're in the field, when if they are first unseen to send information back to our GIS department. And of course, then everybody's question, it may be if Heather Widlin is a, a department of one, how does that work when she's, you know, unavailable? There are backups already and they are on a shared calendar so that if Heather is unavailable, there are two additional folks that can do this work, but essentially it will allow our first responders and sheriff's deputies to report a fire start and then we can factor in the the real time wind direction, other factors to create a more realistic evacuation protocol and notify residents when they should be preparing to depart or be on guard or actually when they should be jumping in their cars and where to head. So we're going to be trying this in action in the next two weeks and then I would anticipate we'll come to a commissioner work session to show you the board how this new system works.
Is that something that is funded and managed by the county? I'm guessing since you named all those people in the meeting?
Correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know the board had authorized the two roads for ground pounders fifty seven P and sixty M. They will be starting the day after Labor Day, so starting next Tuesday. And we'll put out a, a, a social media alerts for our folks as they may be impacted, but obviously we'll try and work around the school traffic time so that residents are not delayed in getting to work in school. But that work should be finished within two weeks on both of those roads. But we do anticipate some traffic such as alternating lane traffic while ground pounders is in, in improving both of those roads.
Mike, or Ryan, I see you're wrong. Would you like to add something to that?
I was just gonna say, we were coordinating with, with ground pounders this week. They were gonna try with the paving operation was held off from the, from the rain. So they were gonna try to get started. This Thursday or Friday, they were gonna, they were gonna move in to start doing some prep work so that they could hit the ground running. Next week, it'll be a short week for them. They're gonna work on Friday. We're gonna have a, we're gonna have a loader operator, loader operator available for them to load on Friday, just to kind of help them get done. And then we'll see how progress goes. It all depends on the amount of trucks that they can get and keep working on the project. So I know. Yeah, we'll, we'll keep you updated. It might be a little longer than two weeks. With the hauling, we're gonna let them keep going until conditions pull us off the project.
And are they doing them simultaneously or one first and the other second?
Sixty M, they're gonna start with sixty M and once they complete sixty M, they're gonna move over to fifty seven P.
And sixty M is Silver Pick and fifty seven P is Fall Creek Road.
That's correct.
Okay, I would like a couple of gold stars. I'm getting it. And do you think social media is sufficient for getting the word out to the community? Or do we have other alert systems or newspaper articles or what do you think?
Well, we do have contact with the HOA, so we could send, probably the biggest impact is gonna be on the two HOAs, so we can send both the HOA's notification and then we'll have, uh, we'll have, you know, our, our website and also our Facebook page that the info will be out there.
How's that sound, everybody? I'm getting, I'm seeing thumbs up. Great. Yeah, definitely do those HOA emails. Who would be responsible for that?
We'll get that. We'll, we'll do it from here. We have.
Your office. Thank you, Ashley. Ryan, thank you, Ashley.
Yep.
And since you're on, Ryan, go ahead and stay unmuted for a moment if you would. The next two items, first is CDOT. According to their published notification a week and a half ago, they're supposed to be done with their paving up near the entrance of Mountain Village tomorrow end of day. But I don't know if you've heard any more about a delay since they, they could not pave in the rain yesterday.
I, I know that they, I know that as of yesterday, they still estimated about three days left of paving.
Okay.
And so, yeah, so I don't, I, I wasn't up there today to see if they continued working today or if they were able to. But, uh, yeah.
I got a notification from a resident up there asking, they said there was no, no paving occurring today. When will it resume? So I'll reach out to CDOT and copy you and the board to see if we have an updated schedule.
Okay, and, and we did, the delays, the, the delays will be a lot shorter now because they're, they're not gonna be there. They're done with that wide section in front of the Conoco Station and so it'll just be two-way traffic that stopped and not three-way traffic through the, through the roundabout. So it'll, it'll be a lot quicker getting vehicles through there now.
So just to confirm, they are gonna complete paving up till the mountain or just past Mountain Village entrance, is that correct?
Yes.
That's their plan, yes.
Cause they've already striped. I thought maybe that meant they were done, but that's not the case.
Nah, yeah, yeah, they, they still have paving to continue.
Okay, thanks.
The next one that also pertains to Ryan is an update on the Tomboy Road repair. I spoke with Keegan at Earth Tech this morning and Ryan's been, and his crew have been in constant contact. I am elated to share that the county had two other areas above the road failure that we had to work on with our bulldozer and the crew got those completed yesterday. And Ryan sent us pictures, sent me pictures that are now on social media of ours, our crew is done for the repairs that we need to complete, but Keegan shared with me yesterday. During the rain, they were trying to continue working in the rain and several rocks started coming down on them and their crew hitting equipment and so they, they pulled off the site. They're optimistic that they're going to have good progress today, but he wanted to give us a heads up that he did not think it was likely they would be finished by Friday at five PM. So this is the factor that we all kind of suspected whether could put this out of our hands for their completion timeframe. And I asked him to call me at the end of today to get a status update so that we can notify our social media and communications folks as well as the tour operators. And I'm in contact with John Jet regarding the Imogen Pass run, but that, the project does not appear that it will impact them in any way. Now, we should be completely out of there and, and fixed before the Imogen Pass run the following weekend. Do you have anything to add on that, Ryan?
Um, well, just that, yeah, everything. So we still have those, our two pieces of equipment. As soon as they get done with their section, we were gonna bring them back down and that, that are sitting up there, but they're not in the way. It's not gonna impact the opening of the road. They have started, Nico has started doing demo with his equipment that he had up there for the drilling and for, for sending that, setting some of the anchors in the rock. So he's starting to demo all his stuff out. So that'll all be done. They'll just have the, the equipment that is being used for the wall, which is, which is just an excavator and just some other, some other support equipment that they'll have to get out of there, but it's not, they should have a lot of it done by that time. So when they finish the wall, they're still making progress every day. They're getting a couple of courses done as lo, as much as they can. I think today, if they can, they're gonna work a little bit later. That is what it sounded like. They're gonna try to take advantage of the weather when they get it.
And Ryan Keegan told me that if you wanted to move that dozer and any other equipment down, you could do so today or tomorrow. It's really up to you.
Okay, yeah, it's, yeah, it's. I think Tom was planning on getting it out of there next week.
Okay. Next up, yesterday.
Mike, is the road open to pedestrians and hikers and bikers over the weekend or?
Yes, it will be.
Okay, but just not vehicle traffic?
Not vehicle traffic at this point.
As we know, yeah.
So we'll, as at the end of today, I'll, once I speak with Keegan and Ryan again, to see how far they've progressed and what their schedule is for up till Friday at the end of the day, we'll put out a press release likely tomorrow to inform folks of what they can expect if they want to travel up there and when it will be open to vehicle traffic.
This, I think this weekend is gonna be the Imogen Run too.
No, it's next weekend.
Or next weekend is gonna be the Imogen Run. Okay, so.
So.
Yeah, it should be open for that. No problem.
Yes.
Yeah.
So next up, Jared, Heather Widlin, myself and Dave Foley met yesterday for what I thought was a very exciting discussion about the county's ownership in the RGS right-of-way. I know we've often discussed the county's ownership of that right-of-way through the Alexander property in Ilium. During that, and then subsequently in looking at our ownership through Sawpit area, I asked Dave to explore with the clerk's office recorded deeds of other railroad right-of-ways of county ownership. And he unearthed many. So at this point, I've asked Heather Widlin to work with Dave and start mapping out all of our own right-of-ways emanating from the town of Telly Ride Down Valley and then up towards Mountain Village. It was kind of a very pleasant surprise to learn that the county still has retained ownership of numerous rights of way as it pertains to the potential for additional emergency egress. And we also meant want to make sure that property owners who may have one of these right-of-ways in their property are informed of our ownership before they go about building. As we found at least one project where it appears construction has occurred directly in the center of our right-of-way. So more to come on that. Tomorrow, there's a Region Ten Board Meeting, twelve to two thirty.
Mike?
Mike, we lost your audio.
I think the guy needs a T-Mobile phone.
I'm sorry, I lost you there for a moment. Did, did you hear the Region Ten Board Meeting?
No.
No.
Tomorrow's a Region Ten Board Meeting, ten to two thirty. Will you be attending that, Commissioner Waring?
Noon to two thirty, yes, sir.
Brilliant, thank you. I'm gonna try and speak quickly because Starlink doesn't seem to be my friend at the moment. Monday, county will be closed for Labor Day. On Tuesday, ten AM, we'll be having a follow-up from our board retreat. Wednesday, we have our regular meeting, which is also our CDOT annual meeting at the beginning of that one. That's a pretty long and meeting with a lot of important topics. But that's all I wanted to give you a heads up on. Do you have questions or direction for me?
Where is our goals meeting gonna take place?
I anticipate we'll be back in, in the commissioner room again.
Okay.
Yes. Jared, what do you have?
You covered all the topics, Mike. You're sharp, sharp today.
Yeah. And I will be back in tomorrow. I do not have strep throat according to the medical center, so. And I got additional medicine, so I'm feeling a little better already.
Well, don't come in if you're contagious, please.
I won't, don't worry.
Okay, we are on to Commissioner Updates, item ten. Who would like to go first?
Do you wanna go? And I was thinking when you share our Sunday mine complex, then I can follow up on whatever you potentially don't cover.
Perfect.
You said you had a pretty well-prepared synopsis of that, so.
I've had some meaty discussions recently. On Friday, October twenty-second, I attended a CCI West Region meeting in Delta. It was terrific. We spent about half the time on all county updates, people sharing kind of what was happening in their county, concerns they have, plans, projects, and then we moved into conversations about proposed legislation, which is kind of the second time we'd heard about many of those things. So I just wanted to share with you mostly what's happening in the other counties. First of all, all of the counties who are experiencing wildfire or have so far this year said we're incredibly positive about the collaboration that took place across agencies and across county lines. It looks like that system, whatever it's set up, informal or formal, is really working. Obviously, there were some really big events and yet they all felt that they were managed well, which was super reassuring. I mentioned that to the fire chief when we chatted about something else this week and he said, yes, keep that in mind when you're looking at budgeting, particularly at the state level for training and equipment and so forth for firefighting because it is that sort of upfront investment in his mind, which I understand that pays off in terms of these success stories in, in wildfire fighting. So anyway, that was a real positive. Another, not, not as positive at all, the conversation was about budget struggles that everybody is having, every single county. And when they talked specifically about what their challenges are, nobody mentioned the five point two five percent cap except for me. And I kind of asked them, like, cause I went near the end for the updates, like, why? I haven't heard from you. What is it? And no one responded. I think that their other issues are outweighing that issue and the other issues being the loss of state and federal grants, which as we have picked through our budget, we aren't super dependent on. And then also the loss of oil and gas revenues. I, I don't have the specifics here, but there were a number of counties that said that, I mean, that their revenues previously had been like more than fifty percent driven by those, what are they called? It's not separation, it would be severance, severance tax, right? And several counties mentioned that, and these are, I will argue, you know, counties that have a lot of oil and gas and more conservative leadership said that their feeling is that because Colorado oil and gas regulations are so tough that their people who previously operated in their counties are leaving to go to states with looser regulations. And they specifically mentioned Utah and Wyoming. And then someone also mentioned New Mexico. What do you think about that, Jared?
If, if I may, I this is a refrain I've heard a lot for a long time. You know, I spent some time working for the state where we were dependent with our energy and mineral impacted funds on severance revenues. I think one of the really true facts today is the cost of oil and gas is at some all-time lows, particularly when indexed to inflation. I don't think exploration is happening because there's just not a return on investment for a lot of that and and I know that there is a barrier towards, you know, to, to enter into that market due to the environmental regulations that have happened. But there haven't been significant changes in those environmental regulations for three to five years. And so, you know, I, I know that that refrain is out there. I've heard it. It's continual. And I, I think that those counties in particular should really look at diversification efforts. For us, it, you know, I, I was just looking at this number yesterday. We've got, you know, two point seven million dollars of valuation from producing mines. You know, and, and we didn't kind of build our economy around that one resource. And I know, you know, during those boom times, you see a lot, you save a lot, really should be the effort. And I, I think that will continue because I don't see a spike in oil and gas prices in our near future unless something really surprising happens, so.
Well, that was a big part of their concern about their finances. And then many, many counties also mentioned the increase in health insurance costs. And there were a number of counties that I was sitting right by who said that they currently pay, I think, all of the premiums for their employees and families, which is extremely generous. And I think they were looking to pull back on that. So just in terms of ways folks are addressing their budget issues, a number of counties said they were gonna make use A number of counties said they were gonna make use of that expanded lodging tax opportunities. You recall the state in twenty twenty. What month, year, twenty twenty-five allowed counties to go from a two percent to a six percent lodging tax. So a number of people were taking advantage of that. Couple of people mentioned changes in their sales taxes, reducing grants that they offer. Dipping into reserves and hiring freezes. So um we are not alone, um but oddly, as I said, nobody mentioned that. Um Senate bills or House bills being a driver. Um there was also conversation again among the more conservative counties about this, what they're calling the unfunded mandates movement. And I think you probably have all heard from the Mesa County about that. Um. And there has been a letter sent to the um governor about specific uh bill, um sort of, what do I want to call them? Uh responsibilities have been delegated to the states or to the counties that they feel are problematic. Um in talking to some of the more progressive counties, they wonder if this is um. A rationale for selective uh implementation of state regulations that they're not interested in implementing. I don't know. I'm just sharing everything that I heard. Um. There's definitely consistent concern about the Air Quality Control Commission's proposed regulation, changes to Regulation thirty-one. And that's something that we have talked about. Um and I don't know, have you shared your view on that with Mike?
I have, yes.
Okay, because I had shared that I understood that that was perhaps an onerous regulation and that we would let. Uh if you guys agreed, we would let Senator Simpson know that we are not necessarily in favor of that. Is that, are we consistent?
Uh that was my view. Um. Mike Burdonia had a suggestion of, of um proposing that potentially they, that. Set in a um like a population limit, it's potentially over like a hundred thousand people. Population of a specific county, then that could maybe trigger those regulations. But for the more rural and uh um low populated counties, it's just gonna be. Really onerous and very, if not impossible, very challenging to, to actually implement and fund.
Yeah, Mike shared that with me as well. I thought that was a great suggestion, and so I'll take responsibility for emailing Senator Simpson with our feedback.
Okay, thank you.
Include that, does that make sense? Okay, um and then the last thing that brought, was brought up informally was concern about the state in twenty twenty-six. Making another run at um top-down solar regulations. Um and Galina, can you remind me, did you attend a CCI meeting about that?
I did, yes.
Do you wanna, do we wanna talk about that now or at some point? And um also wanted to know if that's something that you're able to carry on with or whether you need to um. Ship that back to me, because I had been involved last year. I can't, I think I was out of town when that meeting took place, but do you want to talk about that real quick?
Yeah, I will. Um I, I will say that I passed all this information on to Planning Director Kay Simonsen as well. And just made sure she was really honed in on this potential legislation proposal. Um. But I, I mean, I'm curious, it, from the CCI meeting that I attended, there was pretty. Unanimous concern about this. Um and, and this was a pretty wide. Spectrum of counties who either already have. Solar regulations, you know, language in their ten forty-ones, or just beginning to navigate this. Or like in Weld County's um case, they already have a lot of large. Large-scale solar projects cited in their county. Um but the, the general consensus was this was gonna be really. It was concerning and that the counties don't like the concept of there being state-set regulations. Because it's just so, ever, it's so dependent on what the, how the county is situated. And so I will continue to follow this. Um. I don't know if I can speak more to it right now. I've still been doing quite a bit of research, honestly. There's a lot of information provided. At the meeting urging us to kind of continue to, to research this and read through the. The pretty thick legislation, so um I've done like kind of top-level. Gotten a top-level understanding of it, but I, I need to dive deeper. Um.
That's great.
And I'll continue to connect with Kay, because she's also just starting to kind of wrap her head around it.
That's perfect. I really appreciate that. And whenever you wanna bring it to us, please do, but otherwise, I appreciate your taking the lead on that.
And just to follow up on that, if you are getting any um correspondence about that, send it my way. Outreach to me.
Absolutely. Thank you for that reminder. Okay, um on Monday, uh. Galina and I and Kay and Amber in the assessor's office and Tori Jarvis. Are um Regulations Attorney and Star. And I wasn't really counting, but there were eight of us who went um to, on a tour of the Sunday Mine out in the West End. And um they really pulled out all the stops for us, perhaps not surprisingly, got the basin store to open. In the morning to provide breakfast. They had their CEO, their COO, their attorney from Denver. They had miners and supervisors all available. To chat with us as well as to um tour us around. They shut down operations from the day, for the day. Both Western Uranium and Anfield were present, so those are the two larger mining companies that operate or. Um I don't know if Anfield's actually operating right now, but they're getting ready to. To do so, or at least to come for permits. Um they showed us um all their operations so that we could kind of understand the surface impacts. And they made the point, which was well-taken, that the, you know, vast majority of their impacts are underground. And in fact, um can I sha- share my screen? I bet I can. Okay, um, let's see, let's see, and share. Alright, so these are some pictures. I'm gonna start with this one, which is a photo of the map of the Sunday Mine Complex. It's actually um flipped north to south, so up is south and down is north. Um and we um. Met here at the Sunday, the entrance to the Sunday Mine, which is where their offices are. And then we drove along to see um uh those little buggies, um see the openings of the Carnation Mine and then in the Saint Jude Mine. But you can see how many um really miles and miles of mining have taken place over the decades. Um I asked the COO how many miles he thought it was, and he estimated, and he said, don't quote me, but here I am quoting him. Very rough estimate, like three hundred miles of, of tunnels down there. Um but anyway, the point I wanted to make, going back to my notes, is that they, they wanted us to recognize that. You know, most of the impacts are not on the surface. Um. We had, uh there were also some sort of independent miners there who had come along to speak with us and kind of, you know, show us the scene. And the comments that they made to us and Galina kind of unofficially, but I just want to share them, was that. They feel that they are already very well-regulated at the federal and state level. And they questioned why we needed a third layer of regulations. They in particular felt that some of the regulations at, were already redundant and that it was difficult for them to. And all, and yet at the same time sort of inconsistent in their criteria and measurements and so forth. And at the same time, um so difficult to, to track and report. Um and so. That was kind of the point I felt the miners wanted to make. Galina, did you get anything else is specific to our regulations? Even though that wasn't really, we didn't really talk about them in open conversation.
Yeah, um, that, that was the takeaway I got from just general conversations was. Concerns over redundancy and administrative burdens. That might become very cost-prohibitive for them to, to operate. Um and yeah, it had, there, there were some other representatives there as well. Um well, within those entities that like a. Geological engineer, that gentleman I had some really interesting conversations with and he's.
From Anfield, that car?
Yes, yeah, car, from Anfield, and um he shared with me some of the concerns of our drafted regulations. Um specifically to those administrative burdens. Um. Yeah, uh there also were, there was at least one gentleman who was not a miner, but a property owner with, with. Um mining claims. That was another.
That he was leasing out.
Hood lease out. That was another individual present who was not associated with um either of the companies. Or a miner himself. Um and then uh Don Coram, who now runs a policy group. He was there as well.
That's right, and he owns land that is mined, I believe.
Yeah, and he has, as I also understood, sold off several of his mining claims. Um. But still owns many. To Anfield, yes, in the Slick Rock region.
That's right.
Um and we also, are you, will you continue?
Yeah, so I'll, this is, I think probably the best picture I have here of um. And I'm sorry, I didn't go through everyone's pictures. People were snapping like crazy, but. This is, we were at the Saint Jude Mine, which is that sort of fourth one down, looking back towards the waste. Rock pile at the Sunday Mine. Um and just to kind of give you a sense of the scale and also of how they, you know, store all of that. Is that the best word for it? Waste rock or?
Waste rock. That was a technical term they used.
And then um here is Galina and I kind of standing on the edge of one of them. Um are, what they, and this is Mike, who's their COO, I forget his last name, um but he was, followed us quite closely wherever we wandered off. Galina and I kept going, can we go see that? And he goes, sure, and he and the lawyer would follow along with us, but they couldn't have been nicer. Um but anyway, that's kind of the edge there, and they made the point that, you know, once they're all done. That they will, you know, re-contour the land um and. Cover it with topsoil and re-seed it and things like that. Um and the point I recall was. You would hardly know we were there, but then we will take you to the next step of our tour. Um which I felt a little wondered about that, but I, let me just show you a couple more pictures. Just to bring this to life a little bit. This is the entrance to the Sunday Mine. So this is, that was the one that had, you know, the majority of the tunnels, and it just kind of struck me how kind of. Primitive and small it is. Um again, speaking to the relatively. Um relatively small impact. Let me see if I can find one of the Saint Jude Mine. Um well, this gives you, here it is. Here, this is the Saint Jude Mine without us all standing in it. And then here is the Saint Jude Mine with us standing in it. Um so that gives you a sense of the scale. First, here we are inside the Saint Jude um opening. This is a cool picture looking down into the Saint Jude Mine, um just with headlamps. Let's see, what else did I not want to miss? I think that gives you a sense. This is the Carnation Mine, which I believe they said they're about done with. And so it is closed up and, and fenced off, but it won't be remediated until, until they finish the operations. Which, by the way, Galina, correct me if I'm wrong, I got the sense that there is enough uranium in this complex to mine for decades. Into the future.
Yes, and I, it was definitely in the field kind of meeting. And I had wished I had actually been taking some physical notes, because they gave us a lot of stats about. The amount of uranium still present and a lot on. Current and projected future domestic demands that was interesting. And I did, I didn't remember the stats specifically, but it was kind of eye-popping to me, actually. That was more than I thought.
I have a couple um numbers that stuck in my mind, although I don't have like the context necessarily. But they said that the United States is the biggest consumer of uranium today, and that we consume about fifty million pounds a year. Which I don't really know what that means exactly. I do know that when you create a rod, they kept saying, it's like, it's as big as your thumb. So that, and I don't know how much that weighs, but anyway, we are the biggest consumer. We. Have a very limited domestic supply, um because, not only because of limitations on mining. But also on all of the other steps in the process to create fuel. So for example, the next step after mining is milling, and there's only one active mill in our whole country. Which is obviously where these guys send their, their uranium. Um and right now, that bill has stopped. Or really limited the amount of uranium and vanadium they're processing because they are working on. What are those other metals?
He put in. Some rare earth.
So they're milling rare earth metals, so it's a real log jam. Sunday Mines could be operating if there was enough sort of, I don't know if you call it upstream or downstream capacity, they could be. Employing like seventy, sixty, seventy people, and right now they're, I got the sense that we're like ten or twelve or something, because they just. Yeah, they said they're sending out two truckloads a week and they could be sending out ten. Was it, it was, yeah, so they, there's a lot of capacity there. Um. They, this, that picture I just showed you was a piece of ore. Um. There you go, and there was a, somewhere I have a video in here where the guy, oh, here it is, where the guy was, ran his guide or counter over it. Which was kind of interesting. That's not gonna work. Okay, anyway, the front of that thing was loaded with uranium, the back was not, and when he went to the back, it was silence. That was kind of interesting. So one thing we had not planned while we were there was to go underground. But the curious commissioners expressed our interest just generally to Mike, the COO, we're like, oh, we're so bummed. I really wasn't asking. I just assumed it wasn't possible. And we said, you know, we would have loved to have gone underground, and unfortunately, I guess it's not possible. And it's like, actually, we could take you underground, and so we went underground. And we went into the Sunday Mine. Um this is called a check tag. They put it in your pocket. It's with the number that they have recorded as assigned to you individually, and so should there be an accident and they need to identify your remains. This is like your dog tag. That was kind of chilling.
Um I was happy to give mine back.
Here we are getting ready to go underground, like an amusement park ride. Tori, oh, I forgot, Nicole was there, how could I forget? She drove me over there. She was amazing. Alright, here's a short video of us having entered the Sunday Mine and going downhill at about a fifteen percent grade. At, I don't know, fifteen miles an hour? Into a dark hole. The only lights we have that are under there are the um headlamps and then the, the, the lamps on the. On the car. This is another one where we're going deeper into the mine, and what you're seeing here is an air vent. It's like a pl- balloon kind of pipe. That's full of air, and that they do in order to mitigate radon. They said the greatest danger in underground mining, at least, at least this kind. Is radon. It's not the uranium, it's the radon. Um and so they just have to, they have a very robust air, air pumping system, and they're testing it all the time.
I will also chime in there that. One, one thing that was um interesting is you can hear this vent, that air. Filtration, air, airflow vent the whole time, and I have actually. Yeah, from the outside when you're just out in the waste rock piles. Um and I, I've been out there recreating and heard that noise and. Never knew what that was, so it's kind of interesting to make that connection, like, oh, this fan is going. Twenty-four-seven, basically just to keep the airflow safe and at standard underground.
And they have five, I think, of those fans, they said. So this is deep in the ground here, and the yellow spots you're seeing are the lights from people's headlamps. This is an area that has been mined. And you can see that they go in and they um secure the ceiling so that things don't fall. This was a little bit funky because it looked like a lot of stuff had fallen and gotten caught, but they have that um set up. This is kind of the classic thing we were looking at, which is you kind of go into this room that's maybe fifteen by fifteen. And then there is an opening with what they call pillars on either side, that you go into the next room that's open. And they just keep going that, like that, following the vein. They have to retain these pillars, which is this piece right here. At a ratio of about thirty to seventy percent, so thirty percent pillar, seventy percent mine, in order to maintain the integrity of the. Of the space. Um let me just see if there's another. This is one of those pillars, and again, those yellow hot spotlights are. This is one of those pillars. And again, those yellow hot spotlights are just people's headlamps. But up here in the ceiling where that yellow color is, uranium turns yellow when it oxidizes. So that is uranium. And then the lower area that's just gray is just stone. And what they told us is that once they've kind of gone as far as they want to into the mine and, you know, building it out, they'll come back and mine all those pillars and just let the whole thing kind of collapse. So there's still, you know, even the areas they mined, thirty percent of it is still left in there. This is kind of cool. Galena, you are more into this than me. You should talk about this.
Oh, yeah, this is an image from Black. Everyone turned off their lights and we used a black light. So the different ore presents with these bright colors under black lights. And it was also really interesting to see a lot of like fossilized material, which is where the uranium eventually like would embed. And these ancient seabeds where there's organic material, then the it's a whole geologic process. But once that material is fossilized, then the uranium, when it's traveling through the substrata of the sandstone, it actually like kind of attracts, magnetizes to those fossilized organic materials. So we saw this huge fossilized portion of a tree, and there is like veins of the uranium in it. Fascinating.
One more thing, this was, I can't remember what his name was, Richard. He was a miner with Anfield, I think, and showing me his Popeye muscles. Because these guys are mining very similarly to the way it was taking place here in the late eighteen hundreds. They do have a pneumatic drill, but they are holding it in their hand. Or, you know, it's, they're bracing it on the ground. Where's, okay, here's a picture of it. I didn't get a good one. But this is the drill here. And then they just put drill bits on it and they just drill into the stone, you know, drill, drill, drill these different holes, pack it with explosives, go a thousand feet away and blow it. And then the rock sits, it falls down, and then they haul it out. It's just amazing. And I asked, it takes, two miners can advance like five to ten feet a day. And that includes the drilling, the exploding, the clearing, and then the, the work they have to do, the bracing, that's the word, exactly. So it was, that was amazing. This is a picture of us happily leaving, leaving the mine, going to the and all along the way, there were these like spray painted signs that said, Sunday Mine Exit with an arrow, like incredibly unsophisticated. In case you got lost, you would, you would know which way to go. So there we are, we made it out. So anything else you want to share about, oh, and then here's a glass of wine that I had when I got home. Should I say the first glass? And here are my dirty clothes in the laundry. All right, we're dumping my pictures. Galena, did I miss anything about the Sunday Mine, that we can go on to the Burrow Mine?
No, I think you covered that. Brilliantly. That, that was, it was a lot of information. And I certainly learned quite a bit. And having spent quite a bit of time in that geographic area, it was, it was really interesting to just see what actually exists there.
Yeah, really interesting. And, and I really appreciate, I said a couple times to Kay, thanking her for organizing that, because it was kind of a production. And obviously also for the mine companies to have their big brass show off. But I think it was a really important gesture of goodwill and, you know, a willingness to be there and kind of see what's going on, since we are working on our mining regulations. I think it was time well spent. And I think, I know they appreciated it. So after that, I didn't take any more pictures, because I was really fried. But we went to the Burrow Mine, which is a historic mine from the maybe mid nineteenth, twentieth century that has been remediated. And it's right along the Dolores River. You know where Cole Cropper Bedford's Road is? You all have been down there. It's right, it's right along there. You pass it as you go down to Cole and Carolyn's house.
Yeah, and slick rock.
Slick rock, right, yeah, slick rock, yeah.
And it's the Burrow Mine.
Thank you. And anyway, what was interesting there is that because it's a historic mine, Colorado, some agency did not allow complete remediation. So, because they want us to, like, as a, it's a historic site. So it was kind of, you know, just like piles of rock that they had left there, that waste rock. And then they had kind of contoured it to catch any water that might come off it, so that that water didn't flow into the river. And then they had moved some of it over sort of across the way. And then they had contoured it and tried to reseed it, it hadn't grown, in the way that I would assume the Sunday Mine would eventually be remediated. So I didn't, I wouldn't say that you're probably, even with full remediation, not going to know the mine was there. Like, I feel like that was kind of a big statement that we haven't, I haven't yet seen, that that's true.
Yeah, I think it's notable just that arid environment in which these mines are situated, you know. Reclamation, it takes a really long time, and especially in such a dry environment, getting vegetation to regrow and take hold is, is a process, especially during drought times. It's a, you know, I think they reseeded that a couple of different times, and it was still pretty bare vegetation.
But it was well cared for and it wasn't dangerous. And, you know, it was clearly they had done what they needed to, to protect the area outside the permitted area. So that was, you know, that was also notable. So that was kind of it for that Monday, would you say?
No, one other kind of notable as far as the, the DRMS regulations and the BLM regulations that would come into play, that Sunday Mine Complex is sited on BLM land. And the way that that is regulated is they've got to comply with DRMS. But then because it's on BLM land, then there are BLM regulations. And DRMS just applies specifically to the mine site. It doesn't apply to beyond the boundaries of that operation. Whereas BLM regulations extend beyond the, the boundary of the mine. And, and so mitigation impact goes beyond that footprint, basically. But if it were a mine sited on private property, though, of course, those BLM regulations wouldn't come into play. So I did have some conversations about where the proposed county regulations would come into play there on private land, looking beyond the boundary of the DRMS regulations.
That's great. So I had some conversations with Tori Jarvis, who's working with Kay on our regulations and our mining regulations. And let her know that it had been kind of a while since we've had this conversation. And she suggested, you know, that we've been addressing it, and yet we have one meeting planned for September seventeenth, where we would potentially thumbs up, thumbs down on those regs. Is that correct? Does anybody know here? I think that's the, that's right. Thank you, Carmen. And so Tori said, offered to come and make a kind of recap hesitation to the board. Before that, if we wanted to kind of get up to speed on, you know, why are we doing these regulations? What will they do? Why have they been crafted to date as they are? So that on the seventeenth, we would be better, we could ask a lot of questions about the seventeenth, we'd be better informed to make that decision. How does that sound to you guys? That I'm seeing nods, okay.
Would you also agree an invite to the CPC?
I think their work is done, but I was thinking it couldn't hurt to have a couple of them here, or whoever wants to, to share their thinking on what, how they got here. Does that make sense? Is that what you're thinking? Okay, great. Mike, are you tuned in right now? Or Jared, maybe you could take this down. Would you be able to work with Kay or suggest to Kay that she gets something on the calendar for us? It would probably be, we only have two more meetings before the seventeenth, so maybe the tenth. The third is looking pretty big.
I will see if that works with Tori's schedule. I'll work with Kay.
Okay, so third or the tenth, I think. And yeah, does that sound good to you all? Okay, great.
It does. Thank you. I think that would be worthwhile.
Do you see this as in person with Tori, or would it be possible for her to do this remotely?
That would be her call. She lives in Montrose, so she, either way, if she wants to come up, she has reason to come up, she could. Or she could do Zoom. Would you have her preference lands?
In person is always preferable, but I don't want to kind of, I think if she's got other obligations that day, but can, did I say, so I'm willing to have you there.
Okay, will you check with her if she's, if she's available to come in person?
Sure.
And then also coordinate with the planning commission?
Yeah.
Or whoever is available?
Yeah, well, we'll kind of send the mass invite out to the planning commission, see if they might be able to attend.
That'd be great. And, you know, let's, let's not rush it, just because this is a, kind of been a long process. So I don't want to cut it short. If we, if it's our last crack at asking questions and getting up to speed before we have to make a decision. Okay, one more thing. Yesterday, I attended the San Miguel Power Association meeting. They had invited local electeds and staff. This is like kind of their annual meeting here in San Miguel, or this end of the county. And Jared was there as well, so please fill in if you'd like to. Just some notable update, notable topics from their update. The first one is they talked about Tri-State. So you know, we're an electric co-op, and then we're part of a larger electric co-op. And our larger electric co-op is Tri-State, so we're sort of a, yeah, we're one of their members. And then individually, we are all, as, you know, business owners and property, and residents, members of Sampa. Anyway, Tri-State is making quite good progress on increasing their proportion of their energy that is fueled by renewables. By the end of the year, more than half of their energy will be produced by renewable energy. They expect by twenty thirty, it will be eighty percent. And so that's five years from now. And I think the goal is about ninety percent. They meant another sort of positive piece of news, I think, in terms of Sampa's, you know, the way that the system is functioning, is that currently Sampa is only allowed to generate five percent of their own energy, which really limits like our ability to put in our own solar, you know, geothermal, whatever other projects we wanted to do. But Tri-State and Sampa have agreed that they, that will be raised to twenty percent. The timing of that is unclear, because it has to be approved by FERC, which is the Federal Energy Regulation Commission or something. And sadly, it was contested by, this arrangement was contested by another Tri-State member out of the Dakotas. And so now it's in what they call regulatory litigation. But the good news is that both Tri-State, Tri-State is on board. So we're working in the right direction. Someone asked, actually Scott Pearson asked about the IRA money that Tri-State had been awarded. It was like, I don't know, was it nine hundred million or two billion in low interest loans? Tri-State had opted for the loans. There are really like many questions about federal programming right now. It's unclear whether, how much of that, if any, will get through to projects. Because of the timeline, these projects have long timelines, and I believe they've been sort of like, if you're not underway by twenty-six or done by twenty-seven, you don't qualify. Anyway, it was vague. And not, not like, they weren't like, oh, but don't worry, it's gonna be fine. It's, it's kind of trending the other way. They talked about EV adoption. They said Colorado leads the nation in per capita adoption of electric vehicles. And that San Miguel County is the fifth fastest county in terms of adoption in your state. So I felt a little proud of that. They talked about their Electrify and Save Program. And this is a new program put in place to help people fund upgrades to their appliances and energy systems that would, it's sort of like more smart technology that would, well, first of all, electrification, as opposed to like gas or other sort of dirty fuel kind of appliances. But also things that might have timers to make better use of the time of use rates. And that Sampa has a program, very low interest, where you can make your payments through your monthly bill. So you, you buy, they, they give you the money to buy the appliance or whatever it is, and then you pay it back at a low interest rate over time. And they said that it's structured such that presumably the amount of money you're going to save in your bill because of having this new appliance would be the amount of your payment. So it should be kind of a wash. Anyway, that's a really important program we want to promote around the company. The last thing we talked about was the Naterita Solar Project, which is basically, I don't know if you know about this, but Sampa had plans to build on a brown field out by the Naterita turn. That's really on hold, and I don't think they're particularly optimistic about it. The same, the Montrose County Commissioners have a moratorium on solar in place. And two of the commissioners want to add additional regulations that would effectively kill the project, which is a shame, because they, they were awarded, Sampa, a nine point eight million dollar grant. And they will probably not be able to make use of that. The last thing I wanted to report on was the special session, which ended yesterday, but I'm going to wait, because I couldn't get the details that I want to. So I'll report back to you on that. Next week, I will say that the health insurance affordability cash fund, that, remember, we wrote a letter to the, our guys, it did pass. I don't know the specifics of it yet. Both Sukla and Simpson, as far as I could tell, voted against it, but it passed. So I'll report more on the special session next week. Done. Who's next?
Been a busy week.
I love all this stuff, you know. It's exciting. Things are happening.
Yeah. On the twenty-first, I attended the Gunnison Dolores Watershed Association Annual Meeting in Montrose. This is a gathering of all of the regional conservation districts. So Delta Conservation District, Gunnison Conservation District, and Chavino Conservation District, which San Miguel, San Miguel County is sited within Chavino. There is some really informative guest speakers that prevent, presented really innovative technology being utilized in the conservation realm, including low water consuming irrigation equipment and analytic tools being utilized to develop. They're being utilized and developed currently, actually, to identify priority agricultural areas for targeted conservation project implementation. So a lot of like LiDAR imagery and kind of like aerial data gathered to then identify ag lands that could actually benefit from conservation efforts. And these lands are being located throughout western Colorado. And, and landowners are being approached. So it's kind of a new, new attempt to work on water conservation and soil health projects on private and public lands. All the different conservation districts gave presentations on what they're prioritizing and working on and kind of lay of the lands. And that was, I, I found fascinating, just to see what the different districts were doing. Gunnison Conservation District is prioritizing weed management. And there is a fair amount of their resources going into those efforts. And it just kind of made me wonder if, with the Ask Chavino Conservation District recently presented to San Miguel County, if potentially they could, and I've started these conversations, if they could potentially take on some weed vegetation management role within the district, just an idea. And then there were, there was reports from the Colorado State Conservation Board, Colorado Association of Conservation Districts and the NRCS National Resource Conservation Services at the national level. No big surprise, but there's been cuts in staff and funding. And this is particularly affecting the ability for conservation districts to have access to engineers. There's really an engineer shortage right now because of these staff cuts. And it's in turn really affecting local projects. Yeah. I was nominated as a CACD Resource Committee member on the Small Acreage and Urban Interface Subcommittee. This came as a bit of a surprise to me, but it's just once a year commitment in October, and I'm sure I'll learn some things. And no one else was nominated, and I was like, sure, I'll do this. It'll be interesting. So anyhow, took that on. Yeah, and it was worthwhile. I, there was a, a pretty good mix of folks in the room, including a couple of constituents from San Miguel County. Anne gave a really good synopsis of the Sunday Mine Complex Tour, so I'm just gonna skip right over that. So, uh, Anne gave a really good synopsis of the Sunday Mine Complex tour, so I'm just gonna skip right over that. Uh, I um attended a West End Community Stakeholder Meeting um regarding local concerns related to potential impacts from the Four Seasons Development Workforce. And this is based on preliminary plans from the developers to purchase and lease various properties on the west end of predominantly Montrose County um to house approximately four hundred workers over a three-year period. Um, so this was a meeting just from, with representatives from the towns of Naterita and Nukla, Norwood. The Naterita, Nukla EMS, Montrose County Sheriff's Office, Mustang Water Authority, Montrose County Commissioner was present and engaged. Um, that was the first time in this process that Montrose County has kind of stepped in and weighed in on this. It was Commissioner Pond. Basin Clinic, Uncompagre Medical Clinic, um and then I was there representing San Miguel County. Um, uh, San Miguel County Sheriff's was not able to attend, but uh Sheriff Kovalt has been wa- keeping his finger on this and involved um as well as uh Norwood Fire and EMS. John, Chief John Bachrath has been involved and has been engaging. He wasn't able to attend this meeting. But um, that there, you know, uh, everyone kind of brought their concerns forth. Um, there, there's a range of concerns, but um you know, primarily it's a concern of strains to resources um to the fire and EMS uh departments, to Sheriff's Office respondents. Um, and then some kind of, well, and also to water systems and the, the water commissions have concerns about being able to serve and even having the infrastructure in place. So this was the first meeting of its kind where all these people actually gathered to share these concerns. Um, and there is, there will be a stakeholder meeting on September eleventh um with the representatives um from Town of Mountain Village and Four Seasons developers, um which is Merrimack Ventures is the company that is uh working on that development. Um, and that, that meeting will be held in Naterita, location to be determined. It's not going to be open to the public. Um, it's just gonna be a stakeholder meeting, but there is discussions on whether it should be um broad, it, it's probably going to be recorded for public transparency. Um, and there will probably be media present. Yeah.
I had heard a news story, I think on CODO, that a property owner in Redland applied to the Norwood Water Commission for some, I guess maybe taps to build that man camp we've heard about.
Yes, so that, yeah, and Redvale, um, and mantra, uh Commissioner Pond also shared his insights with that because there was a development application for that particular site um submitted to the, to Montrose County. Um, but ultimately, Redvale is served by the Norwood Water Commission. That's within Norwood Water Commission's jurisdiction, um, boundaries. And uh, the Norwood Water Commission decided to not serve those taps because the amount of water needed and lack of pressure, they're just concerned that we're gonna be able to actually adequately um, serve that project. And so subsequently, the land owner uh pulled hi- um his development application. So that particular site is probably not going to happen based on that. Um, and so I, I think the next place that was, you know, that the developer told me they would have their sites on is um near the town of Naterita. Um, so now Mustang Water Authority is kind of coming in with concerns about actually serving that site. Yeah, um, so to be continued. Uh, but there's a good unified front here, just bringing forth concerns and trying to figure out um ways to either mitigate these impacts um or potentially say no. It's, time will tell. Um, but there's, there's this meeting scheduled in September that will be really, I think, worthwhile for the developed, the developer and the Town of Mountain Village to hear all of these concerns and give them an opportunity to be able to respond um and take next steps. Um, you know, I, I organized this and have been, but I officially handed the baton to the town of Naterita. Felt that to be quite appropriate at this stage. Um, and they finally, or I shouldn't say finally, but they are now organized and ready and willing to do that. So um, I will still engage and participate absolutely, but I'm not leading this effort. Yeah. Thanks.
Important, and I'm really glad that you pulled all that together and also that you're able to hand it off.
Yes, triple bravo.
Thanks.
Thank you. But do keep us posted. Um, this is definitely a county issue.
Oh, and one thing that was not in my notes that was a kind of sidebar, but I happened to run into the um Ridgeway Mayor Clark at uh just a social event. And rid, based on your feedback to me and Commissioner Brown, thank you um that Uray County and the Town of Ridgeway was not aware of the Mountain Lodge um being long-term leased. And they actually have zoning in place that does, that disallows that use. So that actually might not happen according to Mayor Clark. So subsequently, that's gonna be another fifty-five approximately workers that are gonna need to be housed elsewhere.
Yeah, I, I happened to be in the car with Commissioner Jay Nice from Uray, dropping up to see Kat and mentioned to him Galena's effort and, you know, concerns and then like, oh, by the way, you know about the issue with Ridgway and they had no idea. The commissioners or the council. It's crazy.
I should say nothing is final there, but that was where they are at in the process. Yeah.
Thanks, Galena.
That's all I have to report.
Um, I can report that on Thursday last, I met with Jared and two representatives from the National Housing Project, Neil Drubin there is the principal and the ex-local Doug Spelling Brent, who is working with him and his team. We talked about a couple of projects that they've been working on for uh housing in Frisco. How those are going and discussed possible links or um potential partnerships here in San Miguel. Um, they are interested and have a lot of experience and knowledge. And Doug, or rather Neil is a financier and deeply experienced in that world. And Doug is uh really um focused on modular building and being able to find efficiencies there and reduce presence. So between them, they were an interesting crew and Jared and I have got some homework to do as a follow-up, which we are chipping away at and we'll keep you informed if anything makes sense with that partnership. Uh, the other meeting I had Thursday afternoon was with the president of the Trout Lake Homeless Association, Isa Ali. And that was based on a call from Burgess saying that we haven't met and we would love to be acquainted. So I went out, we sat in the porch for a couple of hours and we discussed mutual areas of mutual interest and uh potential concerns of the county. And I found it to be great company and representation. Sometimes it's jobless. Uh, after that, I was with them, uh, started through Tuesday, yesterday. And um I'll be back in action today and more to come.
It's a nice time, I bet, all that, both sides and families. Alrighty, what else? Are we ready for our two hour and twenty minute, minute late adjournment? Sorry, guys. Let's go. Who wants to move? Motion?
I move to adjourn.
Second?
Vote?
I.
I.
I as well. It's about two twenty and we are adjourned. It's actually between eighteen. Thank you staff for hanging in there. Thank you for commissioners for that unplanned extension. Um, but good stuff. I'm every agenda.